Good evening. Welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting of June 28, 2022, being called to order at 6:08 PM. Let us have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kusakian.
Here. I do want to mention that Councilmember Vreja Agajanian was here earlier today. He was not feeling well. We did test for COVID. It wasn't COVID, but he nevertheless, as a precaution, decided to not participate in this evening's meetings. So we wish him a speedy recovery. Hopefully, he feels better soon. With that, let us have the flag salute. I'll ask everyone to rise and place your right hand over your hearts and repeat after me.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Empire, one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation.
Father, as we approach Independence Day, we remember the founders of this country who won liberty for all and lit the torch of freedom for our nation. We remember those who fought and died for our freedom in the past and others whose services protected us. We thank you for the blessings of liberty for this generation and for the generations to come. We thank you for our independence, peace, and for all those who have bravely given their lives in the defense of freedom and justice. May all the people of this land have the grace to maintain our liberties in righteousness and peace. We pray for all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much, and may we have your report.
The agenda for the June 28, 2022, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on June 22, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. And what is next?
Next would be presentations and appointments. The regular housing authority and the city council meeting for July 5, 2022 have been canceled. The next regular meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, July 12, 2022.
Great. Thank you very much. And what is next?
Next is consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second. All right. If there's no other comments, do we have any callers?
Mayor, we have no callers.
All right. Then let us have a roll call on the consent calendar, please.
Councilmember Agajanian, Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kusakian.
Yes. Thank you. And what is next?
Next is city council and staff comments.
All right. Who would like to go first? Anyone?
I have a couple. I have a couple.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. I attended, and Councilmember Brotman was also there, to the Glendale Latino Association's Celebrate Comunitat, where we distributed 18 scholarships to our local high school students and Glendale Community College students. Also this year, the man of the year was our own Chief Sylvia Alonzo, who, true to his character, shared his award with the entire department for their dedication to our city and its residents. So I want to congratulate the Glendale Latino Association for a very successful event and wish good luck to all of those students that received the scholarships. I also attended the opening of the Young Ladies Institute Convention being held in Glendale all this week. This is an organization of Catholic women from all over the country which help organizations, nonprofit organizations, and particularly seminarians to meet their financial needs. They do things they help, like foster care programs, guide dog programs, food share, senior programs, et cetera. They are performing good works for charity, and I want to just thank them for choosing Glendale. You know, they could have gone to a lot of places, but they chose Glendale to have their week-long convention. So they'll be enjoying our diversity, our food, and entertainment for the entire week. So I just want to welcome them again and thank them for choosing our great city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Who else would like to? No? Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I have. I have one thing. I think, as all of you know, I my main mode of transportation is my electric bike. And as somebody who rides around the city on a bike, I experience the slings and arrows of being a bike commuter. And one thing that I believe I have brought up, at least privately, is the way our traffic signals work. So when you are on a bike and you come up to a traffic signal, you'll sometimes see the little marking there, which means there's a sensor that will pick up that you're there, and then the light will go through its normal phase shift, and you'll get to go. But many, many of our intersections don't have anything. So if I pull up on the bike and there's no car coming the opposite direction, I'll just sit there. And I have a choice to either get off my bike and push the pedestrian button, which I'm not willing to do until I see cars have to get out of there. You know, drivers have to stop, open the door, get out, push a button until they get the red light. So I'm not willing to do that. So what does that mean? It means I have to run the red light or just sit there and wait till a car pulls up. So it's I know it seems like a trivial nuisance thing, but it's things like this that I think really kind of depress people's willingness to take this alternative mode of transportation, which benefits everybody. It benefits people in cars to get people out of cars. So I would just like I know we have a bike transportation plan being developed, and we discussed earlier, it sounds like that's still maybe as much as six months out. And I would just like to ask if I could get a second on this, for public works to look at the cost and timing to make changes. So intersections, at least those that are on a designated bike route, either have a sensor or because I imagine that's not cheap, you have to probably put something in the ground, to look at doing an automatic phase shift so that it just shifts on a regular schedule whether or not there's a vehicle there waiting. I think that's kind of the least we can do to level the playing field a little bit. There are a lot of other insults that that we face as bike riders from cars. I won't describe some of the things that happen to me all the time. And I do acknowledge there are bike riders out there that are putting their own lives at risk and others' lives at risks by being completely reckless. So I don't condone that at all. But anyway, if we could look into that, if I could get a second, I'd appreciate it.
I'll second it if you include optical sensors as well as.
Oh, if there's.
As a roadway.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything.
There's another way sometimes.
Sure.
Okay. Nothing? That's not for now. Oh, thank you. I want to just remind everyone, as was mentioned, we will be dark next week because we will be observing the holiday. And then usually after the holiday, council is dark, giving staff a chance to catch up with work as they return to City Hall. So July 4, we're going to be celebrating our country's independence, and we're doing in-person events. I want to remind everyone about the Crescenta Valley Fireworks Program. That will be, again, held Monday, July 4, at Crescenta Valley High School. Gates open at 4:00 PM. Fireworks with music begin at dark. So family fun, inflatables, ice cold beverages, live music, food trucks. And you can find out more through their website or through their Facebook page. So I encourage you all to attend this fun family gathering. Couple of more announcements. I want to express a public congratulations to Trenton Julian and the USA Swim Team in winning gold medals at the FINA World Championships in the 200-meter freestyle relay. Trenton is a graduate of Glendale High School. He is one of the fastest American swimmers out there today. We are, again, he's the pride of our city, a pride of our public schools. I know we have one swimming aficionado up here, a swimmer himself. We were talking about his accomplishments about Trenton today. So we wish him well, and hopefully we'll see him in the Olympics. Another person was in the news. Congratulations to the local lottery winner, who, according to the California Lottery, someone bought a Powerball ticket at a gas station in Glendale and won $1.4 million in Saturday night's draw. And that means that maybe, now maybe, they can afford to buy a home in Glendale, given the rising cost of housing. And yes, my sarcasm and my commentary on the escalating cost of housing is what it is. So I want to congratulate whoever it is out there that hopefully it's a Glendale resident or maybe someone who was just stopping by in our city. I want to thank staff and my colleagues for running a smooth meeting during my absence. Last few weeks have been eventful. Unfortunately, I missed many city events due to catching COVID-19. I had to quarantine and let it pass. It was not a pleasant experience, and I still caught it after having received my vaccine and having received multiple boosters. So please be safe. Continue to practice good hygiene. Wash your hands. And if you do have the sniffles or you're not feeling so well, please get a COVID test and take care of yourself and protect those around you. I did, however, watch all the meetings from home and made sure to keep up with the votes and the items discussed. I want to thank Mayor Protem Ara Najarian, who stepped in and ran a very smooth ship. And lastly, I and City Manager Rubik Galanian accompanied our Planning Commissioner Chang Lee as we accepted an invitation from the Korean government to visit our sister cities and met with the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. We explored areas of mutual cooperation and aid. We had many discussions with companies looking to make investments here in the United States, specifically in Glendale. There was even discussion of a museum or center dedicated to K-pop, a very popular genre of music sweeping the globe. Many of the people we met with were very appreciative of the work done by prior council members and individuals who have visited. We met with the mayor of Bone, who was here just a few months ago. And everyone remembered fondly the visits by former council members Najarian and Devine, and your names were mentioned with smiles, and everyone was eager to see you again. This was the first time we were traveling anywhere. Usually, in the past, mayors have visited our sister cities. We have invitations now coming in from our sister cities in Mexico and Armenia. So we accepted the invitation. It was tough not to be here. We landed yesterday at 2:30, and here we are, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, and ready to go. So with that, I just want to announce where we were, why I was absent, lest anyone think I was trying to dodge my duties as mayor. So thank you very much. And with that, we have, I believe, one caller, right, for the community event announcement portion?
Correct, Mayor.
All right. Let's go to the phone calls.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes. Herbert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Kusakian, councilmembers. I have three slides for this presentation. In the 116-year history of Glendale, no council decision has been so financially devastating as the one taken on April 24, 2001, to grant pensions up to 90% of the employee's highest salary. The financial repercussions have already impacted the quality of life of one generation Glendale residents and taxpayers. The problem is so great that it will severely impact every major decision you will have to face climate change and stability you will face with other emergencies. I suggest that the city council make pension reform its most prominent task. The current inflation and the expected economic downturn are conditions that we have not experienced since the early 1980s, and it will impact Glendale's finances significantly this year and in the coming years. The financial hole that we have created will continue to worsen at a faster rate, and you need to know how. To your credit, you did pay attention two years ago and set up a pension review committee, but I found the committee's proceedings limited and met with huge obstacles, inasmuch as the majority of its participants had invested interest in calculus and in their own multimillion-dollar pension benefit. Here is the front page of the final report, the report that is in your hand. Please show the slide. This report is extremely deficient. It skips over many essential topics and is riddled with misdirection. I documented my comments line by line through 65 pages, and I sent all of you a copy. I did not sign my name to it, and it is a disappointment that my own investment of study, research, and effort, both several hundred hours, has little to show for it in that final document. I have also submitted a five-page summary dissenting opinion with my observations on the topics covered. And this is a sample of the copy. Please show the slide. But there is a significant number of issues that must be addressed in a manner that is impartial, arms-length, by people who have no personal stake in the outcome. These are just some of the important topics that were not covered in the committee's deliberation, despite my numerous attempts to have these essential topics covered. Please show the slide. For example, how is it that the University of Southern California, with 28,000 employees, can run that operation with a defined contribution plan where nearly every job in Glendale has its equivalent in that organization? I suggest, again, that this coming city council proceed with an independent study by the Rand Corporation and additionally by one of the nation's top five accounting firms to get two totally independent analyses to define the path out of the financial debacle the city is in. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. And there was a scheduled discussion on this item today, but we have other very important items that I think will generate a lot of public interest as well, namely our discussion about what we will do with our athletic fields. So for that reason, we've moved this discussion in order to give it the appropriate amount of time for council to absorb, digest, and ask questions about what the Blue Ribbon Commission did. So that is the reason. We are trying to give it the proper attention, or as much as we possibly can, including extending the number of meetings that we've had. And I'm sure, and I will look forward to hearing more from Mr. Milano during the public discussion of that report. So thank you. Any other callers or comments for the three-minute portion?
Mayor Kusakian, I have no more callers.
All right. Then let us move to the remainder of the items on the agenda. What is next?
Seven A, adoption of ordinance. A, a city attorney regarding adoption of hotel worker protection ordinance. One motion receiving report under Election Code Section 9212 to adoption of ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Glendale Amending the Glendale Municipal Code to Add Chapter 5.120 Hotel Worker Protection Ordinance Introduced by Councilmember Brotman on June 14, 2022." And three, motion providing further direction.
All right. Any discussion on this?
Do you want me? Are you going to say anything?
I can provide a report, or it's ready to present.
Let's have a brief report. I did follow it at the last meeting, but I would like to hear it.
It will be very brief, Mayor Kusakian. So the council heard a report two weeks ago on this ballot measure that was submitted by the proponents that would adopt the hotel worker protection ordinance. Council at a discussion asked us to provide some additional information that's before you tonight regarding some of the legal issues that we thought might be that were worth analyzing, as well as providing some numbers in terms of the number of hotels impacted in Glendale. So that information is provided to you pursuant to Elections Code. Our recommendation is to accept the report and then introduce and adopt the ordinance if the council is so inclined.
Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
We've already introduced the ordinance.
It has been introduced. You're correct.
Yeah, okay. So the two items here are to accept the report and to adopt.
Adopt the ordinance. And I would recommend two separate votes for those.
Okay. So, yes, I'll thank you for your report. I read it. There were no gotchas there. So I will move to accept that report.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, to accept the report. And in regard to the compatibility or the association with rules or laws that will be passed by the city of Los Angeles, what was the determination of that? Could you please share with us?
Sure. So the issue that at least was raised initially in our mind was whether or not that might constitute a constitutional delegation of the council's legislative authority. But the cases in the area indicate that as long as the council, this city council is making the fundamental decision whether to have those provisions as it pertains to minimum wage, delegation to either administrative or other legislative authority is permissible. So that's the short answer.
Okay. And if, after the adoption of this, we find that there are parts of it that may have some issues or conflicts, such as perhaps that, what is the council's authority, then, to amend or make changes of it? There's a time period that has to pass, correct?
Mayor Kusakian, so because this was submitted as a voter-sponsored initiative, it can only be amended by a vote of the people?
We can't amend any parts of it?
No.
All right. I thought that there was authority after a certain period of time, after the passage of time, that there is some changes that can be made to.
The only changes that could be made is if the court determines that all are part of the measures is unlawful, then obviously the council would have the authority to make changes to bring it into compliance.
All right. So this is it?
Okay.
Well.
So the petition was signed and presented to us. Clearly, we saw they had enough votes to do that. Rather than place it on the ballot for the voters, the council just decided to adopt the language of the ordinance and to implement it ourselves. So how does that take away our authority, our discretion to make adjustments down the line if we think are necessary?
Let me add on to that a little bit. So obviously, any amendments would have to be consistent with the ordinance. It couldn't take away any more rights that are in the ordinance. But it's all intentments are going to be in favor of it being valid, and any changes couldn't be adopted that would change any rights granted by the ordinance. So again, the idea here is when a voter-sponsored initiative comes forward is to essentially avoid the situation where a city council later on makes changes that are inconsistent with what was submitted to the council. So it's as if the voters have adopted it themselves. Even though you're putting it on.
Sure. I think I understand what now. Council can amend and adjust it as long as the intent and what the purpose of it is not.
Correct. But what I would say is you can expand upon the rights that are granted by the ordinance, but any legislative body would be without authority to diminish the rights granted by the ordinance.
One of the reasons why I'm asking is because, not because I have anything against the ordinance per se, or it's not related to the, I guess, intent or what the purpose of it is. I recall when the rent control initiative was also being circulated, that did not qualify with signatures for the ballot. And at the time, as clerk, as I was researching and we were looking into it with the city attorney's office, it was my understanding that, and there was a similar issue. There was an issue that was tied to city of Los Angeles and other jurisdictions, regulations as it pertained to rent control. And my understanding was that you could make certain amendments clean up, but there was a time period for which it could not be done. And I want to say it may have been at least a year after its enactment.
I don't. That's not my understanding of the law. I'm happy to look into it further. But again, the idea here is when the voter-sponsored initiative. But again, the idea here is when the voter-sponsored initiative like this, it becomes the law unless it's amended by the voters.
Okay. All right. I'll look into that a little bit more because I want to make sure that I understand the law clearly, and if a city attorney's office could also provide some information on that, I'd appreciate that. So everyone's on the same page. All right, with that, who would like to...
We'll move...
No, we need a motion and a second on it.
Yeah, I will move that.
The report.
We already...
On the report.
Right. Now, I'm moving adoption of the ordinance.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Brockman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
And Mayor Kasakian.
Yes, thank you. What is next?
Next is 8A Action Items, Glendale Water and Power, Glendale Water and Power, and, sorry, 8A Action Items, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Glendale Water and Power, Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Commodities and Services, One Resolution Improving Renewal of Annual Authorization for the City Manager or GWP General Manager or their Designees to Enter into Contracts for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Commodities and Services, Including the Transfer or Initiating and Clearing Broker Services, Not Take See Five Years in Duration and Dispensing with Competitive Bidding. And B would be Glendale Water and Power Regarding Annual Update to Glendale Water and Powers GWP Wildfire Mitigation Plan, One, Where Resolution Adopting Annual Update to Glendale Water and Powers Wildlife Mitigation Plan.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Kasakian, members of the city council. We'll start with item 8A. I know 8B was read into the record, and I'm going to ask Chi Valdez, our Integrated Resource Planning Administrator, to present a report for your consideration and the accompanying resolution for approval.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. My name is Chi Valdez, Integrated Resource Planning Administrator for Glendale Water and Power. I do have a few slides here to go over for this action item.
Okay.
So we're here to ask for your approval to renew our authorization to execute short-term transactions for power, gas, renewable emission commodities, and other energy services such as natural gas scheduling as well as broker services without going through the city's competitive bidding process. This authorization covers transactions that exceed...
Can you hold on for a second? I need to, we're having some technical difficulties. Let me change this. Which slide were you on?
I believe I'm on this slide.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Yeah, so as I've mentioned, we're here to ask for your authorization to allow us to execute transactions for power, fuel, renewable emission commodities, and energy services such as natural gas scheduling and broker services without going through the city's standard competitive bidding process. So this authorization covers transactions for those that are not exceeding five years in duration. So to maintain system reliability, load and supply must be balanced on an hourly basis, and to do this, we usually buy short-term energy in day ahead, an hour ahead, or real-time market to supplement our long-term resources. We also need to have the ability to sell excess supply when the load is lower than anticipated within the hour. So like stock markets, the energy commodity prices fluctuates constantly. So time is of the essence here, and this authorization will give us the ability to execute trades with counterparties in a timely and cost-effective manner. So bidding is actually fundamental to the trading process. So to ensure that we're getting the best price, we go through market surveys. We also use the Intercontinental Exchange Platform. This is the ICE platform where we do the actual trading, so we are able to see the bid-ask prices at any given point in time, and we also coordinate with brokers and trading Currently, we have approximately 70 active and credit-worthy counterparties that we can transact with for gas and power. So this trading authority policy is basically an annual requirement per our trading policy. So we have to go back to city council on an annual basis to renew this one. So the last time we went was back in June 29 of 2021. So, you know, like it's expiring in a few days, and we want to, you know, ask for the authorization again to extend it for another year. So if the authorization is not renewed, the competitive bidding will be required, which could actually adversely impact our ability to procure short-term supply to meet our load, maintain system reliability, and comply with our environmental mandates. That's all I have for this action item. If you have any questions, I'm here and my staff is here as well to answer questions.
Okay. Any questions? Councilmember Brockman?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Valdez. Are there any changes from what we saw last year?
No, for this one, there's no change. It's the same thing. It's just the date that we want to extend it or renew it for another year.
So it's exactly what we approved a year ago. You're just extending it for another year. Okay, that's what I thought. Thanks.
I'll move the item.
Second. There's been a motion and a second. May we have a roll call?
Councilmember Agajanian. Brockman.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian.
Yes.
I did read item number 8B. If I may read it again, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Annual Update to Glendale Water and Powers GWP Wildfire Mitigation Plan, One, Resolution Adopting Annual Update to Glendale Water and Powers Wildfire Mitigation Plan.
Great. We'll turn it over to staff. City Manager Galanian.
Mayor Kasakian, members of the city council, I'm going to invite Dan Scorsa, our Chief Assistant General Manager of GWP, to present a report for your consideration and the accompanying resolution.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I have a short presentation that I will cover to review what's in our wildfire mitigation plan. This is an annual review of a plan that was started in 2019. We are required to have an annual review and adoption by our governing board, which is the city council. So let me start with the presentation. Make sure, get the slides moving. Oops. All right. So this is our wildfire mitigation plan. The latest update is our 2022. Original was in 2019. This limits the likelihood of ignition of fires from GWP assets and equipment and limits the spread of localized fires into a wildfire. Let me go on to the next slide. GWP elected to use CALFIRE's threat map, and I'll be showing you the map in the next presentation slide. Approximately 62% of the city's total area is in an elevated risk of wildfire zone. We work with the fire department, which has conducted its own risk assessment and validates what CALFIRE threat map shows. We've also identified the elevated risk of wildfire, namely the Tier 2 and Tier 3 zones, which I'll show you in the next slide. We also work with the fire department. We have a vegetation management program which clears our residences about 100 feet around the residence from sources of ignition. We work very closely with the fire department. This is the program where homeowners are notified and to clear around their homes. If they don't, then the fire department would bring a contractor to do it and bill the homeowner. By applying these methods, let me go on to the next slide, and I'll go over the... So here's what the threat map looks like for California. And then on the right side, we kind of zoom in to the Glendale area. You see the different colors. The lighter color is the higher-risk zone, that's the Tier 3. So basically, on our Verdugo Mountains is where we have the higher-threat zone. As we map our assets, the land area where GWP electrical assets are located is approximately 0.47. So we're going from 62% to 0.47. In terms of circuit miles, the total overhead circuits in these areas are 12.92 miles, about 9.55 miles of Tier 2 and 3.7 miles of Tier 3. So how do we mitigate that? We've replaced equipment. We've replaced power poles in the Tier 2, Tier 3 zones, transformers. We've trimmed 6,700 trees. That's mainly our biggest way of mitigating wildfires is to use our vegetation management system. We've undergrounded several 8,000 feet of underground high-voltage circuits. We've procured poles wrapped in a fire-resistant wrap, and we've installed several of them. And then as, let me go on to the next slide here. So this is what it looks like. We're installing covered conductors and fire-resistant poles. The covered conductors are insulated wires. They're called tree wire, and the intent is that if any vegetation gets in there, it will not make contact with the conductor. Therefore, it would not ignite. So as we're replacing our overhead conductors, where we can, we will be replacing it with the covered conductor. And then in the higher fire-prone areas, we'll also be installing the poles with that special wrap, which you see on the right side, which makes the poles fire-resistant. So we've purchased several poles, and we've also purchased several crossarms that are of composite material. What happens is, as wood sits in the sunlight, UV and the constant light and heat would deteriorate the wood pole. So we're using, or crossarms, so we're using composite crossarms that are made of materials that are very resistant to decomposition and to the UV light from the sun, that would last longer. Therefore, they would not fail under sunlight and cause any ignition. Our vegetation management and patrols, we make sure that we inspect and make sure that vegetation isn't growing into our lines. We also do, we're doing the 4 to 12 conversion program, which we're moving ahead with the contract in the near future. But internally, we've rebuilt 19 power poles and 1,800 feet of overhead circuits. And as we increase it from 4 to 12 KV, we increase the distance between the conductors. Therefore, vegetation is less likely to come in contact between the two phases. We've installed something called a fuse saver. Traditionally, utilities use fuses to protect our distribution system in case there is a fault, but these fuses are heating, they heat up and then they break off. The new industry standard is that to use fuse savers, which are devices that give you the same protection without having an ejected fuse that's blown off that could start a fire. And our wildfire, our tree trimming program, here you see an example where the tree underneath the exclamation mark is getting close that would have been trimmed to the communications level of the transmission pole line that's shown. And as of 2021, we've trimmed 6,787 trees in our Tier 2 and Tier 3 zones to ensure that wildfire risks are minimized. So that's basically the presentation, and on our wildfire mitigation plan, in essence, it is very similar to our 2019. The section that we modified the most was through meetings with the CPUC and the Wildfire Mitigation Board. They've asked us to add a section that has a question-and-answer format, and that's been added to the 2022 plan. In essence, that's the largest change to our document. Next year, we're set to do a major change. That year, which is the third year after the initial presentation, or fourth year, we will revise the plan. We would have it reviewed by a third-party independent reviewer, as we had done on the first plan in 2019. But these three subsequent years, it's just an update, and we've just made minor modifications to the plan. If you have any questions, I'm ready to answer it. Thank you.
One part of this report that I would like for you to explain is the operational practices, and particularly the OMS, that system. I know what we just experienced in my neighborhood, an 18-hour outage was no fun, but I did get, I think you used this system, in letting us know what was going on, how many hours it would be until restoration, et cetera. So I'd like for you to kind of explain that to the public.
Yes. Yes. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Devine, thank you for asking that question. One of the things that we didn't have in 2019 was an outage management system that would automatically report back to our customers where outages are happening. As of a few months ago, we've instituted our OMS system. The OMS system will give a text or an email back to a customer, but I believe you have to sign up for that text or email. It is not an automatic email that goes out to the customers. So we will be working with our customer services folks to do an outreach to make sure people understand that. The way the message goes out, we have 105 feeders within Glendale, 105 distribution points. If you live on that distribution line and that line goes out, those folks will get a message saying, hey, your power's out. And then as our crews are repairing, they will be updating in the OMS outage management system what they found, how quickly can they restore it, so that the people who've signed up would be getting an update, just such as you did.
Yeah.
The other thing is to, if you go to our website, it says outage map. If you click on that on our website, it will show you the very map where the outages are occurring. So if you sign up, you'll get a message, and if you go to our website, you will actually see visual of where the outages are with the updates as our crews are entering information. So you would be getting the same information that we would be getting, and it would be done by the people working on the line. And by having that, our outage management, fire management, wildfires, as it's affecting, we would see it in the map. That was something we didn't have. That's why it was included in this updated version. Does it reduce the risk? No, but it makes you more informed where the events are occurring.
Oh, absolutely. Now, so are you saying that the reason I got the text was because I'm on council? Because I was getting texts from my neighbors asking me what was going on, and so, but I was able to relay to them your messages.
Thank you.
But sure, it was very helpful. It's very helpful, you know, knowing when, you know, that knowing, number one, that you're out there working on it, that you've located the problem, that the crews are out there, yeah, there's a danger going on because there's water in the vault, et cetera.
That's right.
You know, people understand that, and that's important to them, especially when you're going through an 18-hour outage with no electricity, no Wi-Fi, no nothing. So we're going to have an outreach program to all the residents, so if they want this service, they can get it. I think it's really valuable. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Devine, for the question.
Any other questions? Okay.
So we need to move the item?
Yes.
I will do that.
All right. We need a second.
Second.
All right. With that, let's have a roll With that, let's have our call, please.
Councilmember Rajanian. Rotman.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kusakian.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. Next is item 8C.
8C, Community Services and Parks Regarding Life Cycle Assessment, LCA and Triple Bottomline Three BL Assessment of Natural Turf Versus Artificial Turf. One, motion providing direction to staff on the use of artificial turf as the preferred surface type for multipurpose fields based on findings of the life cycle assessment and triple bottomline assessment. Two, resolution, repealing resolution number 19-135, adopting revised Public Works specification number 3624R for construction of the Fremont Park renovation project and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
All right. Let's have the reports, please.
It's Mayor Kusakian, member of City Council, Mr. Coco Panosian. Our deputy director of community services and parks will present this report for your consideration. I see that he has brought some material for show and tell, and he will be assisted by David Jones, our sustainability officer, who was intimately involved in this endeavor, as well as the consultant who worked on the life cycle assessment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kusakian, members of the City Council. Mayor, with your permission, I pass this around. What this is, the actual product, the infill material, as well as the shock pad, for you to get a more of a visual understanding of the product that we're talking about. I won't be covering the technical aspects of the product itself. We'll be leaving that for the consultant to cover under his LCA findings. But I wanted this here for you to get a better understanding, get a little feel and touch. And with your permission, I can pass it to city clerk and have it. So with my presentation, I'd like to talk about the demand for soccer fields. I don't, we don't need to get into too much of detail because I don't think anybody involved in this process the past six to seven years denies the fact that there is a heavy demand for soccer field within the city of Glendale. This was determined back in 1996 with the Recreation Element. Through our Development Impact Fee process, when we did the strategic planning, it was clearly identified during those committee meetings, similarly with the LA County's Measure A assessment meeting that we did within the county. We identified, again, soccer fields being deficient. And currently, we have a number of nonprofit youth and for-profit organizations that use our facilities. And to name a few, we have the AYSO, Homenetmen, Levonistoyan, Sporting SoCal, Far West United, International. We have little leagues, baseball leagues, CV United softball, Christina Sports Association, Glendale La Christina Babe Ruth. These are only a handful of organizations that have demand for our athletic fields in Glendale. As far as the use goes, we have 21 fields in Glendale, of which four are multipurpose artificial soccer fields. It's multi-purpose artificial fields used for soccer, lacrosse, tag football, and other purposes, and 17 are natural turf fields and multipurpose. They're also used for soccer in their outfield. We have 156 groups and organizations that currently use our facilities. We serve 12,000 youth participants. The organizations and the numbers, the average numbers are listed within, and we have about 104 of the 156 groups currently use our artificial turf fields. What has the city done in the past? Past council, dating all the way back to 2005, determined that, given the demand of the field and the lack of soccer fields in Glendale, in 2005, approved the construction of the two soccer fields, the sports complex. Those were our first two artificial soccer fields. And 10 years later, in 2015, we underwent the replacement of the surface, the actual turf itself, with the infill. 2014, Pacific Park Edison Elementary, we had a joint use agreement of the natural grass soccer field over there being converted into artificial turf, multipurpose. And in 2018, council approved for Field One at the sports complex to be converted into artificial multipurpose baseball and soccer field. And if you recall, that project was partnered with St. Francis. St. Francis paid for the construction of that project. Throughout, even dating back to 2012, 13, discussions about soccer fields have been at play with the city council, and council had approved the following five projects for multipurpose fields, artificial turf over the years. Fremont Park, as part of master plan, wanted to note for council that this project is fully funded and it is ready for the bidding process. Depending on council's decision later this evening, Public Works is ready to proceed with the bidding process for that project. Second is Pacific Park. This is also funded, and the plans and specifications for this project are also ready for bidding process. We need to have it adopted by council and start the bidding. Sports Complex is not funded. It is funded only for the design phase. For this one, we do have plans ready for adoption, and depending on council's decision, we bring this back for council for, for funding requests, likely the next cycle, budget cycle. Sridos Elementary and Wilson Middle School are two projects that we have in conjunction with the school district. Council, along with the GUSD board, several years back, I don't recall the actual date now, held a joint meeting, and during the joint meeting, these two projects were identified and approved by both boards for artificial turf. Sridos Elementary underwent a mitigated negative declaration process. That report is ready for adoption by council. Again, we're waiting for the outcome of this meeting and direction and more communication discussion with the school district, our counterparts, to see the direction we're going to go. Similarly with Wilson, a draft EIR was completed. Both those projects are funded with DIF funds and are ready for the next phase. I want to give a brief overview for individuals that may be at home and not familiar with these projects. Here is the master plan adopted by this council of the master plan for Fremont Park. And as you note, the soccer field is a small sized soccer field, approximately 22,000, 23,000 square feet, that is located in the east, southeast corner of the park, the corner of Patterson and Kennelworth, which is currently an open grass area right now. Pacific Park, you note that the north side of this photo, there is the soccer field. That is our artificial turf soccer field, joint use. And then the baseball field is what we want to convert to artificial soccer slash baseball multipurpose field. Sports Complex, we currently have three fields, as we mentioned. Field four, five are the soccer fields. On the far end of this picture, Field One is the newly, four-years-old developed artificial turf field, and we have Fields Two and Three. The one at hand right now for council's determination is the conversion of Field Three. And this is a picture of the layout for our Sridos Elementary. There is turf existing at this location, and with discussions with the district, here is a layout that we had come up with for consideration. And Wilson Mini, Wilson Middle School, as the last project right now for consideration. It is a large turf area, soccer field, natural grass, where the proposal was to have a U-14 playfield, as well as a practice field adjacent to it. So timeline events. These projects were adopted by council several years ago, and in most cases funded, as we discussed. In October of 2020, during one of our CIP update meetings with our Parks Commission, commission requested for us to bring back the concept of artificial turf and do a comparison of artificial turf with natural turf, as well as look at other options. And one of the options presented at the time was an epic system, natural grass with underwater, underground irrigation system. In April of 2021, staff presented the findings to the commission. The finding details are within the report and mimic very much what the consultant had found. The commission at the time voted three to two to direct staff and recommend to council that staff consider natural grass until more information about artificial turf was available. So commission directed us to proceed with natural grass in 2021. Between April and September, staff came back in consultation with our sustainability office, which I know Mr. Golanyan had mentioned, we have to give a lot of credit to our sustainability officer, Mr. David Jones, in working with us throughout this process. I think he knows more about grass than he ever wanted to know, but we do appreciate his efforts and the support he provided throughout the process. We came to council and asked approval to do a life cycle analysis study with a triple bottomline analysis. And council approved the hiring of our consultant, Citadel EHS, who will make a presentation shortly after my portion is finished. In February, during the process of evaluation, Citadel held a key stakeholders meeting, and there were six members of the Glendale Environmental Coalition invited to this meeting, along with five individuals, representatives from the different sports leagues. And they held their own meeting without staff being present to determine what are some of the high criteria that they wanted to prioritize in the evaluation process. The group identified 15 criteria items and ranked them in that order, in a specific order, and the consultant will cover that. And the findings are based on the criteria developed by this group, which essentially are really the key stakeholders to the process. And then on June 2nd, we held a joint meeting of the Parks and Sustainability Commission, where the consultant presented its findings of the analysis to both commissions. So life cycle assessment, triple bottomline for the community's understanding. With a life cycle assessment, we're looking at the product's overall life from its, you know, the kind of a cradle to grave, from the raw materials to acquisition, to development, to the use, and at the end of it, disposal and or recycling, or whatever the product is. And generally speaking, this, this assessment looks at resource availability and use, human health, and ecological consequences. Whereas a triple bottomline, the combination of both, gives us a more of an applied understanding of the social duties among organizations. What do we mean by that? Organizations look at not just the monetary values on their business, they incorporate that, along with a measured ethical environmental factors, kind of translated into three terms, people, planet, and profit. So at the joint commission meeting, there was a very lively and honest debate and discussion about the materials presented, questions from the commissioners and members of the public calling in or whatnot. And six hours meeting, it was a lengthy meeting, but very well-deserved communication discussion that went through. At the end, Sustainability Commission voted three to two. And they voted to support natural turf at Fremont Park, Pacific Park, Wilson Middle School, and Sridos Elementary. And the Sustainability Commission felt that artificial turf at the sports complex would be ideal. They voted in favor of that, given that, you know, sports complex is more designed for athletic fields, and it is not in a dense community area. Some of the concerns raised by the Sustainability Commission are the heat island effect, the use of virgin plastics to make the material, and those are the main factors that guided them to lean towards natural grass, being more environmentally friendly. It's cooler, it doesn't get hot, just like the, the plastic turf, as they refer to it. There were members of the Sustainability Commission that felt that, you know, it should be across the board on all five facilities, and the two dissenting votes were, the reason why they voted knows because they favored it to be at all five facilities. And after Sustainability Commission voiced their position on the item, Parks Commission voted three to two in favor of artificial turf field at the three park sites, which is Fremont, Pacific, and Sports Complex. Their position on, on this matter was, based on the study that was conducted, based on the turf's overall durability, the demand that it's going to meet, the use, the lack of the need to use water, fertilizer, whatnot, they felt it is more ideal at this time to proceed with artificial turf at those sites. And as far as the two school sites, the Parks Commission deferred back to council and wanted council to give staff direction to those regards. So the next steps, depending on how council votes today, we have two options to move forward. If council directs staff to use artificial turf, we will quickly start the bidding process for Fremont Park and Pacific Park. Pacific Park, of course, needs to come back to council for adoption of the specifications before we can proceed. At one point during the year, possibly during the budget cycle, will return to council for funding for the sports complex project. And as mentioned, all these projects are ready to proceed to the permit stage and the bidding stage with Fremont, for sure. And lastly, for the two school sites, if directed to proceed, we'll resume our negotiations with our counterparts at the district to see about the joint use process, see what other concerns they may have, and finalizing an agreement so we can proceed to getting the EIR adopted and the mitigated negative declaration adopted by this council. If council directs us to use natural turf, we would have to edit the plans for Fremont because currently, the way the specifications are adopted, it calls for artificial turf. We will have to begin the bidding process after that. And we have to schedule Pacific and Sports Complex for their renovation, and these would be natural grass renovations. We'll schedule them along with the normal term of our cycle of fields that we renovate within the parks. And lastly, we continue the discussion with Wilson and Sridos with GUSD staff, not knowing how they would want to proceed, given they already have grass fields, and the discussion thus far has been, city pays for artificial turf, they would maintain it, and we're in the midst of finalizing that negotiation. And secondly, if we proceed with natural grass at these two sites, given that those two sites are funded by development impact fees, development impact fees may not pay, may not be able to pay for the development of those sites, so we'd have to look at securing other funding mechanisms to complete those projects. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our consultants. We have Citadel EHS, Ravi Bajaj, here, and we have representatives from Europe and Stock. They are on call because they actually are not local. If you have any questions during the process, or you have any questions for me, I'll be here to assist in answering. And Mr. Bajaj, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. Would you like us to hold our questions to the end, or ask them as we go through the... I think that because we have a lengthy presentation. Okay. Is this working? All right. Because we have a lengthy presentation, I would like us to get through it all. Please, I'd like to ask my colleagues to write down their questions, keep them in mind. We can have staff refer back to them, and that would be my preference. Thank you for asking. You may proceed.
All right. Thank you all for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. As Coco mentioned, my name is Ravi Bajaj. I work with Citadel EHS, and I've been working with two of my colleagues, Paula and Francis from Stoke and Europe, who are on the WebEx now to do this report. I want to start this by giving recognition to my two colleagues, who really represented subject matter experts for carbon analysis and materials, so we can incorporate this comprehensive analysis together. I also want to, despite the lengthy meeting on June 2nd for the joint commission, just give a big nod of thanks and appreciation for the staff members that I had the opportunity to work with and both commissions. My job is to present you with a download of the information we've put together from a comprehensive and objective analysis, and it's up to you to have the conversation to move that forward. So I'm impressed and amazed by the type of discussion that we've had so far, and I want to put those thank yous out there. That being said, with the meeting that has occurred already and the reports that have been issued, I'm going to jump directly into our recommendation. And it is our finding that artificial turf with geophill offers the highest potential to balance the diverse priorities of park users, public groups, and city operations. The three primary reasons for this are for field days of use, a significant increase in those by converting to artificial turf at the three parks that I'll talk about in this study here as well. The installation of artificial turf also brings with it stormwater catch basins that will provide long-term storm event protection in the future, as well as the use of artificial turf with geophill provides an opportunity for reduced life cycle net costs through reduced maintenance costs and increased reservation ability at each of these parks. So those are the three primary reasons that went into our recommendation, and as you'll see, as we go through this, there was quite a bit more information that was used. To give you a sense of, oops, and I totally failed to start my timer because I want to respect the time we have here, so I will stop shortly before this timer goes off. But as you'll see, this is one of my favorite types of charts. This is a spider chart. It does go through all of the different areas that we reviewed objectively and individually in order to score the performance of artificial turf with geophill against natural turf at each of these sites. There is a third option here, the SBR or crumb rubber. That's the traditional type of artificial turf that most of the public comments that came in from the prior staff meeting that was presented did actually address, as well as all of the, all of the evidenced information that we used in this report. So that is not included as an option for these three parks. That was not our directive and our understanding, but it is included in here to illustrate and addressing the comments that came in before, as well as the data that we had access to. Each one of these items in isolation could be used to make a decision about what type of turf should be installed at these parks. As you can see, if this were a scenario where one color represented the outer ring of the spider chart, it would be very easy to make a decision about which type of turf should be placed at each of these athletic fields. This gives us essentially a glimpse at how complex of an issue this is, as evidenced in the past handful of years where staff and yourselves have been involved in this discussion. So in order for us to start this process, we had to understand what those key criteria were, and those were largely driven by looking at previous public comments, having conversations with staff, and as Coco mentioned, finalizing these items in the public stakeholder group meeting that we had. We organized those three, or those criteria into three groups, environmental, human health, and community. And that is slightly different than what you heard about people, planet, and profit from a triple bottomline perspective, and that's largely based on the fact that this is a public institution. So the profit aspect really comes back to community benefit and is included... So the profit aspect really comes back to community benefit, and is included as a lifecycle net cost as one of the criteria in that category. The next slide shows it in a slightly simpler fashion, so if we aggregate the scores across each of the three categories, you can see that under the environment section, the geophill artificial turf and the natural grass perform similarly. On the community side, you're seeing the geophill pull ahead from a scoring standpoint, largely due to field days of use and access to the parks, as well as due to lifecycle net costs. On the human health side, you're seeing the natural grass pull ahead, largely due to the materials offgassing used there, and the biggest one being heat exposure. To go back to a complex slide here, we took each one of those items, and as Coco mentioned, we interviewed folks within the stakeholder group. Each one of our items, we scored on the middle of this slide between a one and a five, so we created an objective reference for each one, where one was the worst score from a performance standpoint, and five was the highest score. So we went through a quantitative analysis on each of these, many of them had direct calculations that were the basis of this, something for example, like costs or for greenhouse gas emissions, we were able to actually calculate a score based on the results of our analysis. Some items were more comprehensive, and did have to result in a qualitative analysis, where we had to set a reference point and evaluate our options somewhere in the middle. So this represents a combination of both quantitative and qualitative analyses in the middle of the slide. What you're seeing all the way on the right-hand side of the slide is the weightings aggregated from the stakeholder groups. We interviewed everybody for giving us a low, medium, or high priority for each of the issues that you're seeing on the left-hand slide, or each of the rows that you're seeing on this slide. If folks gave us a response that it was a high priority, and there was no limit to the number of issues that could be scored as a high priority, we gave that a weighting of two. If it was a medium priority, we gave it a weighting of one, and we multiplied that by zero if it was a low priority issue. So just for reference on this particular slide, the highest score that a particular item could get would be 22, based on the 11 attendees for the stakeholder group meeting. So that gives you a little bit of a lens into the scoring. Now, I'm not going to spend time going through every single scoring section, because we have done that in the joint commission meeting, and I know we have a number of public comments in limited time. So looking at our scoring, these are only representing two of the six different ways that we aggregated our scores. We wanted to, as objective consultants, and admittedly, a little bit excited about different versions of calculations and spider charts, we really wanted to make sure that our recommendation was based on our analysis. So the two that you're seeing up here, the top scoring that does show geophill, artificial turf grass in the lead, is based on an equal evaluation for community, criteria, health, and environment. There were four criteria under community, four under health, and seven under the environment section. Sorry, I take that back, where each impact area was given an equal value. The bottom one basically shows that we're weighting each of those based on the results of a second survey. So that, in that case, we did issue a second survey to all the stakeholder groups, and we were told which are the lowest, highest, and medium priority issues. So these are again, two of the various ways that we analyze our report. We also looked at then objectively if we gave everything an equal weighting, as well as if we gave everything a weighted version based on the survey results. So what to expect from this study? We started looking at this to understand what our boundaries were for our analysis. We looked at three particular parks out of the five that were in question for turf decisions, specifically looking at the public use parks, because we had access to really granular data from an operations perspective and the reservation hours, as well as the fact that these were the three highly prioritized ones that we were going to look at. So as mentioned already, you're seeing the Pacific Community Center, you're seeing the Glendale Sports Complex, Field Number Three, and Fremont Park showing up here. And on the left-hand side, you're seeing where those three parks are located, excuse me, within the city. So our analysis boundary then, once we knew what parks we were looking at, we had to understand what our products were, and of course, you're seeing a physical example of the artificial turf with geophill, the Shaw product. We wanted to look at this from a perspective of 20 years, we really needed to understand how long this would be in play, and understand what the impacts would be at a replacement time as well. So the underlayment, including the shock pad and any other type of grading, can last for 20 years, or two life cycles of the turf product itself. So that's our period of analysis is 20 years. For the lifespan of the artificial turf, we looked at 10 years plus the impacts of regular maintenance on those fields. For the natural grass, we looked at data from the staff, and we actually took a conservative approach, looking at re-sodding every five years, plus regular maintenance associated with them. And to be very clear about the hours reserved numbers that we're using here, for Pacific Community Center and Sports Complex, Field Number Three, those are based on actual reserved hours at those fields. The 2,900 hours assumed if it were artificial turf are based on confirmed played hours in 2021 at the Sports Complex, Field Number One. So that's how we based our assumptions on how much reservable hours would be expected at each of these parks. For Fremont Park, we did have to make an estimation for natural grass, how many hours would be played, as that currently isn't a reservable athletic field. So that's the basis of our analysis. As mentioned before, we looked at a number of different criteria, and categorized them into three categories: environment, human health, and community. I'm going to go a little faster now to ensure that we have time for discussion here as well, but you'll see a few italicized on here. Out of the criteria that we pulled from public comment and the fruitful discussion during our February stakeholder meeting, we pulled out urban heat island and experience with nature from our direct scoring. The rationale behind that is that, as you can see on the slide, or the image on the slide that you've seen before, the three parks do only represent a minimal amount of square footage within the city of Glendale. So from an urban heat island effect, not talking about heat exposure, but an urban heat island effect standpoint, they do not pose a direct threat to urban heat island. Furthermore, heat island is actually a distribution of two criteria through a lab test, one of those is reflectivity, so that's similar to what you're seeing on the left-hand side of the screen here, that's closer to the surface temperature issue or the heat exposure issue that we did include in this study. On the right-hand side, what you're seeing is the slow heat release. After a surface, based on color and the surface texture reflects much of that sunlight back, there's a certain amount that gets absorbed as heat. The emissivity is the second term, and how quickly that heat is lost or emitted from that product contributes to the heat island effect. So a slow release of that heat during colder nighttimes or throughout the year that adds up, that is what the urban heat island effect is referring to. So for this reason, because we found that the artificial turf with geophill does emit heat quickly, it does not contribute to the urban heat island effect, as well as the fact that it's a minimal square footage across the whole city. So that was removed from our scoring criteria. To be clear, again, heat exposure is included in there, based on surface temperature during time of use. The second one had to do with experience with nature. This is covered in two other criteria within our study. Biodiversity is covered under ecosystem services, and time outdoors when we're playing athletic activity, that is covered under field days of use. This one became more of a larger discussion about city planning and access to outdoor spaces for residents and public users groups. So for that reason, experience with nature was not something that we could objectively analyze in the context of this report. So that was also removed from scoring, but again, that topic is directly covered within the sections for biodiversity and ecosystem services, and the field days of use. So our findings again, to reiterate, are that objectively, in our study, artificial turf with geophill did score the highest across the board. In our metric summary here, and I won't spend time on every single one of these, the environmental section kind of showcases six different criteria here. Under ecosystem services, you're going to see a handful of different items covered within the report. This does go into further detail about items such as percolation, or biodiversity within the soils, or at the surface, pollinators, and things of that nature. Largely in this context, you're seeing the scoring aggregate across the board, and a big part of that has to do with stormwater management opportunities and groundwater recharge at Fremont Park, as well as all three of those parks. I want to reiterate in this section that we took a conservative approach, although, as you're seeing with the shock pad here, the turf material is recyclable into other types of products as part of the whole structure or assembly for artificial turf, we assumed for the purposes of apples-to-apples comparison, that that artificial turf would actually be landfilled for this study. And in the same token, we assumed that any turf that was removed from a natural grass system during re-sodding would also be landfilled. So from a waste perspective, we took a conservative approach with both options. From a carbon approach, something you'll see later in the presentation, if I go fast enough to hit my time on this one, is that if we look at a more frequent maintenance of the natural turf fields, an annual re-sodding, not only would that impact the field days of use, all of a sudden, that scenario starts to show a lifecycle net increase in carbon, where natural turf lifecycle carbon is actually equal to or exceeding the amount of carbon over lifecycle for artificial turf with geophill. So we took the conservative approach of current management practices of every five years re-sodding as part of this section. Under human health, we took a conservative approach as well, in looking at all of the different types of criteria we had access to, and known hazardous materials, as well as the newer hazardous materials out there. So we looked at things such as lead and other types of hazardous materials that are known, as well as those emerging such as PFAS as part of this. You can see clearly in this section that heat exposure is something that's measured using a healthy natural grass system, so that, in that category, natural grass is exceeding score and is our reference point. For the purposes of the community section, we had four different criteria here, many of these had to be evaluated qualitatively, but they were all among the highest performing when it came to highest priority by surveyed users. So that's a quick summary of the scoring in each one of these sections. The reason I'm going pretty quickly through this is not to diminish any of the resources that went into this, the report is quite lengthy and does have a detailed analysis of how we took into account the criteria for each of these assumptions and each of the calculations in these sections. But there were a number of discussion points that continued to come up. There are concerns about material impacts of the products, those have been addressed within the report in detail. The heat island impact, we've now talked about, the reason why that was removed from a scored criteria, it continues to be a topic that is raised of concern, and again, that's why I included that slide earlier. Injuries is something that was scored evenly across the board, it is something that is a perceived increased injury risk on artificial turf. However, with the variation in the surface playing field for natural turf in, you know, heavily used natural turf setting, we chose to use them as equivalent scores across the board. The ones that you're seeing here in bold are ones that I want to spend a little bit more time on, they came up during the joint commission meeting, and in conversations that came after the report was issued. So those are addressed in the slides here. The first one of those is the impacts of no permanent irrigation. That's something that we took from the design documents for the three different parks, and we incorporated into our analysis for water. So we only assumed there would be a minimal amount of water used for maintenance at times, as well as for any cleanup, should that be necessary. We went back to Shaw, the product manufacturer, and that's a direct quote showing on the slide here, I know it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, but on the right-hand side, that's actually showing a snapshot of the maintenance manual and the direct guidance associated with that. So we were directly told that the watering, permanent watering or irrigation of an artificial turf system does not impact the warranty or the playing performance, the direct assumption is that an additional amount of infill would be potentially needed to keep that as a healthy artificial turf system. We did not change our calculations based on that, because we overestimated the amount of infill needed, due to the heavy use of these athletic fields, 2,900 hours annually. On the maintenance manual, there are no direct criteria about irrigation systems or watering of the fields to keep them healthy, so we wanted to address that issue to confirm that based on our analysis, no permanent irrigation would be supported at these parks. The second one has to do with flammability. As we heard from earlier presentations here, flammability is a real issue here in Southern California, it's something I'm sure many of us here and on the phone and listening in have to deal with in the near future as well. So this is a serious concern, and is something that we had already addressed through the MSDS, but again, based on further conversation, we wanted to go back to the manufacturer and get additional information. In addition to a few home tests that were performed as well, we wanted to share the quote done here, again, by the manufacturer or representative of the manufacturer, that synthetic turf passes the standard pill burn test and is not considered a flammable product. As you can see in the handheld display there, for those of you that are in the room, there is quite a bit of sand in the infill material as well, and so due to that, there is a reduced amount of flammability for the turf material. That coconut is also a different part of the coconut husk, so that it doesn't represent the commonly perceived flammable aspect of a coconut husk. On the right-hand side, that's the flammability test report indicating no issue for flammability. This slide here looks at the next issue that was discussed heavily. We know that there are some innovative programs, again, continuously impressed by the staff maintaining these parks for heavy athletic use and public enjoyment. So as many of the projects that are occurring now, transition to electric equipment is something that is being considered. I know as well that there are robotic electric mowers that are being tested. Currently, a shift to electric equipment, or electrifying all of the park's equipment, does not include the ride-on mowers that would be used for a major-sized field, even one as small as Fremont Park would need that support. But we used a conservative estimate to say, what about a future state where all of the equipment could be electrified? So what's showing on the left-hand side is the 20-year carbon impact for using electric mowers versus on the right-hand side, what we used in our present, or our report for diesel equipment. And you can see that the lifecycle carbon impact of the natural turf does reduce, and you're seeing an increased score in this what-if scenario on the bottom. I want to caution us for using this too quantitatively, this is a rough estimate or sensitivity analysis, in addition to the next ones you'll see here, in a what-if future scenario. If that occurs one year, five years, 10 years down the line where this is fully electrified, we would see a change in the carbon metric. We would also see a change, oh, sorry, this slide here shows a direct comparison between the 20-year carbon impact from diesel mowers to electric mowers, again, showing a reduction in carbon output at each park. But that wouldn't be the only benefit of electric mowers in a natural turf setting, we would also see a reduction in offgassing and dust. Much of that offgassing associated with natural turf does actually come from the dust from diesel combustion from all of the equipment. So we would see a change or a rise in that score from a two to a four in the table in the middle of this slide, and if we combined, again, a what-if scenario, both of the results for carbon impacts and dust impacts, you're going to see that the scores for natural turf grass and geophill do come closer, but geophill, artificial turf grass does still exceed from an objective standpoint. I know these are slim margins between the different scores, but we are looking at a one-to-five analysis or range for all of them, and again, objectively, we're seeing the geophill, artificial turf grass exceed. On an alternative side from carbon, something I briefly mentioned before, this is showing the carbon impacts of annual re-sodding. So a little bit more frequently completed, that re-sodding does have a waste impact that is not calculated in this scenario, this is just showcasing, oh, sorry, the hard-to-believe fact that if re-sodding were completed annually, you would actually see a net increase in lifecycle carbon on par with the artificial turf. So that was my timer going off here. The last alternative scenario that I wanted to showcase here has to do with field days of use. We looked at a number of different ways to analyze what would happen in future scenarios from, due to climate change of increased temperature, and what that would have, what impact that would have on surface temperature. As part of our report, we recommended if further analysis is needed, that a full modeling would have to be done for the angle of the sun, the shading provided at each of these parks. Typically, when doing a shading analysis for a building, a green building, under a LEED certification or anything along those lines, you look at a mature tree after five years, and what that shading impact would be. That wasn't something we could do within the confines of this report, so just to play a sensitivity analysis, we assumed in this scenario that the field days of use due to heat exposure, in a worst-case scenario, could be reduced to the same amount of hours, 1,700, 1,900, and 2,200 hours, as the natural turf settings. In an obvious scenario, if the heat, the ambient heat increased for artificial turf, it would also reduce the field playing days of natural turf, but again, we wanted to do a sensitivity analysis just to showcase what the impact would be on overall scoring. And again, with this conservative approach, we're still seeing an objective score for artificial turf grass. So these sensitivity scenarios that I've just presented, please take them with a grain of salt, they are rough estimates of what would happen in a future scenario of full electrification of equipment used at the parks, of both impacting carbon and dust, what the impacts of annual re-sodding would be at the natural turf setting, and again, what the impact of increased heat exposure might be on field days of use. So with all of these sensitivity scenarios and further conversation, that I'm grateful to have been part of the commission meeting and further staff meetings to investigate, we still recommend the geophill artificial turf grass based on all the complex factors that go into this. It's up to you to look into the prioritization of each of the various issues here that were associated with this analysis, and we're excited to be a part of this conversation. Just to close, we did include in the report a few mitigation measures for both options. So for artificial turf, some of the things we would recommend investigating in the future or investing in in the future that do align with the Greener Glendale Environmental Plan, which I know is under review for an update as well, would be urban forest growth, increasing trees both in landing strips around the parks to decrease or increase the cooling capability of them and potentially some shading at each of the fields. Although, to be clear, these are larger fields, so they would not directly shade those fields. The heat exposure management policy, this is something that's an active management opportunity moving forward. Southern California's athletic fields are continuing their demand for hours of use. As mentioned before, there are a number of athletic groups that are using these. And so as we engage in either natural turf or artificial turf, it would be good for us to look at the heat, the surface temperatures associated with them, and look at policies for the safety of all the players and users. Injury surveillance is also an issue and opportunity for the city of Glendale as well as some partner cities in the region to increase the amount of data for future management and future decisions. And the last one here is occasional watering. That's something that is recommended in the plan. It's incorporated from a water consumption perspective in our report and is something that would be used, completed using the quick couplers designed at each of these fields. And that occasional watering should be done in addition to, for cleanup situations, even though it does say if animals are allowed on the fields. We know that that is not allowed currently, but should there be any extremely low humidity days, an occasional watering can help the performance of that infill and ensure that it does not leave the fields themselves. If you choose natural turf, there are a handful of mitigation strategies to address the same issues that were addressed in this report. An addition of 40% more field area would get to the same amount of playable hours based on all the considerations within the report. A switch from diesel to electric mowing equipment that has been discussed in this presentation would be of a benefit should natural turf be selected. Development of infrastructure programs and policies to provide nonpotable water use, I understand that that is in place for other park areas. So should natural turf be selected, continuing that type of program would be of benefit to the criteria analyzed in this report. And then substantial funding, maintenance, personnel, and equipment to ensure that these additional park areas in the natural turf are playable and maintained at that quality. So closing again on our recommendation for artificial turf with geophill, and we've covered all of the issues associated with that. I know I've spoke pretty fast and covered this at a very top level compared to the amount of detail that went into our analysis of this and that you might want to look into. So I'm available here for questions. I do, again, have my two colleagues, Francis and Paula, on WebEx as well, should there be any questions directed to their areas of expertise.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Staff, did you want to wrap anything up before we move on to questions?
Mayor Kusakian, at this time, we can, you know, turn it back over to you and the council for questions and/or comments from the public.
Okay. Well, there's a number of people that are on the phones and who are here who wish to speak on this issue, and I know that council has questions as well. I'm willing to allow council members each to ask one or two questions, but remind myself and our colleagues that we hold the dais and we can ask as many questions as we want, but we have a number of individuals who have made time out of their busy family schedules to come here and speak. Some of them with younger Glendaleans accompanying them, and also we have some older Glendaleans who may have other things that they wish to do other than spending the next hour and a half to maybe two hours having a discussion or hearing our back and forth on this. So I'm happy to take a question from my colleagues, but then what I'd like to do is hear from all of the members of the public who've come here. First, from those who are actually physically here in the chambers, thank you for attending, and then from those who are watching from the comfort of their home for the obvious reasons that they're in their comfort of their home. And then we can turn it over back to our council members for questions, and some more questions may arise from the fact that we've heard from the public. How does that sound? Are we okay with that? All right. So let's have a question, one question each. Anyone? No? All right, then.
Well, I'll start.
Go ahead.
And I'll just start off saying, normally, I would have a lot of questions, but I watched the parks and sustainability meeting, not the entire six hours, but most of it. And so most of the questions I would normally have were answered. I thought that was great for us to have that. And I want to thank the commissioners for doing that unpaid service to all of us, making our jobs easier. Really, I only have one question, and it's for staff. And the question is, why, why an MND for Sridos, an EIR for Wilson? Why the difference there? No EIRs or MNDs for the other sites? Can you just explain that to me?
Yes. Mayor Kusakian, members of commission, Councilmember Rotman. As it relates to Sridos facility, the fact that there is no soccer field at that location at this time, at least some form of EIR or negative mitigated negative declaration was a necessity. And the difference between EIR and negative declaration, and city attorney can clarify that further if I do not get it across clearly here. Location of Sridos and its neighborhood is more commercial. On the east side, you have the cemetery, some businesses around in the school district. And compared to Wilson, whereas the perimeter, pretty much all four sides, you have some residential. I think that required a higher requirement by CEQA to do a full-on EIR versus the negative declaration for Sridos. And as for the other facilities, given that they are recreation facilities and they already have currently existing soccer, sport athletic fields, minus the Fremont one, which went through the entire master planning process, and there is turf that is being used for soccer play, albeit not authorized soccer play because it's not official field, the same requirements did not really apply to those. And I'm not sure, Mr. Garcia, if I captured that, but if you wish to add to that, please.
If I could, thank you, Coco. What I would add to that, Councilmember Rotman, is whether a project needs an EIR or MND or is exempt is based on the circumstance of the project. And I think Mr. Pernosian provided a good example, whereas one project is in a residential area may have more significant impacts and is a new facility versus an existing facility. Those are the factors that you look at in determining whether it needs an EIR and MND, not just because it might be the same type of project in general. You have to look at what are the surrounding circumstances to determine what the appropriate documentation is.
And this is something you determine, staff determines? How have these decisions been made?
Sure. It's usually in conjunction with the department that is, the department moving the project forward, working with the planning division with their experts in the environmental review as well as my staff. It's usually Ms. Van Miden or Mr. Grant working on those to determine what the appropriate level of CEQA review is.
Okay. And those, and that, this is the end of this, but the MND, the EIR, those have already been, have those been done?
Yes. Councilmember Rotman, the MND has been completed. A version of it is waiting for council adoption. We have not proceeded, given, you know, we wanted to figure out how to go about the overall direction as it relates to artificial turf. And that is also in conjunction with our counterparts at GOSD, part of the negotiation process. The goal at the time was to finalize the joint use agreement so we can bring the MND and the joint use agreement for adoption by city council. We had to put a pause to it to, you know, look at the request by our commission. And the EIR, the draft EIR has been completed for Wilson-Meady. We had contracted Placeworks, held a number of community meetings, and based on all the factors involved in the process, we do have a draft ready for council adoption.
A final draft. So we've gone through all the comments?
Yes, sir. We have gone through the comments.
Okay. All right. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. Any of my other colleagues wish to ask a question? If not, let's first listen to the public, and then I have some questions. Cards were submitted in order, so I'm not taking anyone out of any particular order. But by way of full disclosure, I have a young child who is a member or a player in AYSO Soccer as well as in the Jewel City Little League, and I'm also a paid member, I believe in good standing, with the Sierra Club. So just putting that out there. Having said that, I know that there is at least an individual from AYSO Soccer that asked for some additional time to make some comments, as well as the Sierra Club has asked, or a representative from our Sierra Club has asked for that. And I'm willing to indulge that. I wish to give everyone only two minutes to speak because I think the issue is fairly straightforward. You should be able to express yourself adequately in two minutes. But for the individuals who want to speak additionally, I'm willing to allot five minutes to each individual, if that's acceptable. So if that's the case, will someone from the AYSO tell me who the person is that wishes to speak for five minutes? Okay? Harry Hanesian. Great. So, and you're, I'm sorry?
I promise to make three.
Okay.
I have a presentation.
In five minutes?
Eight and a half minutes.
Eight and a half minutes? How fast can you speak?
I'll, because we have already covered some.
Can someone else from the AYSO pick up the remainder of your presentation? Is anyone else worked with you on it who can then finish it up for you? That way, at least, what?
I'm not sure if anybody else is going to be.
There's a lot of jerseys. Hopefully, someone can substitute in and, all right. Well, we'll start. We'll see how it goes. So Mr. Hanesian, why don't you start? If I allow you additional time, I'm going to allow the Sierra Club as much time out of fairness.
Hello, Mayor Kusakian and council members. My name is Harry Hanesian. I'm a resident of Glendale for over 30 years. Today, I'm representing AYSO Region 88 and the voice of 3,500 kids ages four to 10 and above who play soccer at our Glendale Parks and Glendale High School District Fields. AYSO Region 88 is a nonprofit organization formed by 100% volunteers, mostly by parents from our city. Thank you. Thank you, Glendale City Council members, past and present, for making projects like Glendale Sports Complex to come true. At AYSO, we love soccer. We love our city. Please give our kids ages four and up and their parents the fields they need so they can play on for many years to come. On this slide, you will see that in 2014, Glendale Sports Complex, watering schedule was three times a week, new sod and frequent watering through the months of September, October, and November. Now, in 2022, when grass is dead on field number three, it is no use for any team. And you will see it over here, field number three over there. It is not meeting the highest expectation of any of the teams that are using the field. Compare slide 2014, which everything is green over here with 2016, and these are the fields that are mostly used by kids ages 10 and under. In 2018, field number three is green. Beautiful. Great. But guess what? You guys also added field number one with a artificial turf, and all the players love the artificial turf. I'm going faster because it's, well, after a short while, that same 2018 field, if you guys see on the picture above, it went bad because kids are playing constantly in use, and in 2019, it gets worse. By 2022, the grass was almost dead, and there's a picture for it. It is unsafe for any kid, for our AYSO kids, to go and play on that field. And if you guys don't believe these pictures that I've taken, now, this is Google Maps showing the same field, field number three, and guess what? Field number three is, two is almost in the same situation, getting there shortly. And there's a green patch right between field number three below the blue buildings over there. In 2019, it's green. And here, 2019, it's green. We're on it. 2022, between April and June, three months. Look at how dead it goes from one, between three months period. That's why artificial turf is important. Welcome to Fremont. Fremont has the same types of issues, just like number two and three, and with one extra thing that happens to it, there's poop. There's dogs over there playing on the ground, and there's a kid over there playing soccer. So we have to address that, that it needs to be safe place for the kids to play. This is the Fremont field. Look at from the Google Maps. It's all dried up. Here's your Pacific Park. Same issue. It's all dried up. So artificial turf is necessary. And it is necessary because we can save millions of gallons of water, too. And it's, we're in drought. I don't think if we're going to get rain or not, and even if we do, we need a lot of it. So the best thing to do is to meet what the soccer kids need. Why artificial turf? Well, when it's not raining, we're told that the plastics are going to, the plastics were going to go to the water. But it's not raining, and there's no rain in sight for now. And if it, if it does, already the parks explained that there's traps for them that are good, they're going to prevent it. And then we find out that cement is the third largest industrial source of pollution. Yet we use it everywhere. So artificial turf, even though with all the concerns that everybody's coming up with, it is still necessary to use it because we need it. If things were perfect, everyone in this room may attest that we all love grass. It feels better to have picnics on them, put a blanket on it, and take a nap. But soccer field needs to be reliable. They need to meet their purpose, like it or not, artificial field does. It solves the problem. It meets the soccer players' needs, and it is cost-effective. I'm going to jump to slides because you guys already have it. And if we could look at the stuff that happens on those fields, the artificial turf, it's not only soccer. We're only talking about soccer, soccer, soccer. But there's all of these sports that are taking place. Plus, you have 60-year-old adults that come out there. They have fun playing soccer. They stay in shape, and they need that artificial turf, too. They already said that artificial turf is recommended by the lifecycle. And here are the organizations that they're saying they need it to. So my choice as a resident of Glendale is artificial turf. It's also the choice of my three kids. It is the choice of AYSO. It is the choice of Aradat Hominatmin. It is the choice of Glendale Football Club, and it's 3,500 kids that they want to play on. The whole year, annually, 3,500 kids, they want to play on artificial turf. Turf is the best choice for the city of Glendale. This is our neighboring city, John Ferraro Athletic Field Club. Look at, compare the sand up there with the artificial turf. Compare the grass area with the 2018 grass area. Grass will not last, no matter what you guys do with the amount that's being played on. What we need in Glendale are 100% reliable fields, just like we have for other sports. Artificial fields, period. Non-reliable fields means no games. When people of Glendale need an outdoor basketball court, the city uses cement or asphalt, not grass. If they need a skateboard park, they use cement, not grass. If they need a tennis court, they use hard and clay material, not grass. And when the kids and parents of Glendale need a soccer field, they want artificial turf, not grass. Dear council members, please vote and remember the kids ages four and under to 10 and under who are not here tonight to raise their voice, and the 12 U and 19 U that are dreaming about their future in soccer, to be the next Messis, Ronaldos, Gritarias, Chicharitos, and more. These kids depend on your decision. They believe in you. The time is now. Give them what they want and help them dream their future from our Glendale fields. Give them their artificial turf. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hanesian. We allowed you a total of seven minutes and 50 seconds, so you kept it under. I appreciate that. But I'm going to allow that same amount of time, and I believe, Mr. Eisenberg, are you going to be making a presentation? All right. I will allow you, you know, seven minutes, 50 seconds. All right, I will allow you, you know, 7 minutes 50 seconds.
Thank you.
We'll say, we'll round up to eight minutes.
Good, there's a PowerPoint just coming. Good evening, Mayor Kasakian and council members. I'm representing today the Sierra Club, the Verdugo Hills Group, and the Glendale Environmental Coalition. We got together on our presentation. Before I start, I want to, just to keep from having a whole lot of people calling in, we did a campaign. We had people write letters. I didn't check how many letters came in to you. And we had people sign a petition, 233 people opposing artificial turf in favor of natural grass. And we just hope that that would keep the callers down. I want to say at the start that we are 100% in favor of kids playing soccer and other sports outdoors. You know, the whole part of being in the Sierra Club is going outdoors and doing things outside. We want to increase the number of children playing. We just see a different path to doing that. At the commission meetings, they mentioned that there are two field possibilities that could be created, to fields, because the report said two more fields could be done. And there's one up at Sports Complex and run by Mayor Spicentennial Park. And that would give the increase of playtime, and it would allow the field reservations to be rotated, so the maintenance could be done without stopping the play. But that all depends on, and I've got to say, you know, I went up to field number three in the Sports Complex, and I wouldn't play soccer on that field. So, you know, if, I would like to see, and we would like to see, natural grass, but we'd also like to see a funding setup and maintenance, that it's a field that the soccer players could play with, like the before pictures that they showed you from a few years ago. In 2005, when you started talking about artificial turf, and you started doing the installations, I would have thought it was a good idea. You know, we all thought, artificial saves water. You know, how could this be bad? But in the meantime, since then, people have started doing studies of what's happened after artificial turf. And we've sent you all that data, and it's in the public record. I want to talk specifically about some of the assumptions in the life cycle analysis, because the score is only about a quarter of a point difference between the two things. So, first of all, there's this concept of hours use, field use hours of play that's divided. So if you have an environmental impact, if there's pollution, having more people play on the pollution doesn't negate the pollution. That would never stand, if this was an environmental impact report, it wouldn't be accepted. It's faulty reasoning. And that's, that alone would probably make the scores even, if you didn't count that. The landscaping equipment was already mentioned. Heat exposure, you know, if shawgrass isn't being watered per manufacturers, you know, they made the cooling claims, that assumes a 30% moisture content in the geofil. But if you're not watering it, even native trees up on the hillsides don't keep a 30% water content. I find it difficult to believe that unwatered coconut husk would maintain enough to keep the cooling effects. The heat island effect, I'll show you some maps, but there's no score on the heat island effect. And I will differ with the analysis. In a couple of slides, I'll show you the thing. And there's a PFAS policy, because the report talks about the PFAS not being listed in Prop 65. Well, there's over 1,000 PFAS. Over 20 PFAS chemicals have been found in artificial turf. And every artificial turf has PFAS of some sort. It has it in the shock pad, the blades, and it ends up in the infill. And then it migrates into the system. And we all, we've heard news stories about how toxic that is. Just because the PFAS isn't on Prop 65 list, Prop 65 doesn't do a class of chemicals. It only does specific chemicals. So each one has to be identified one by one and added to the list. So this will take some time. But what happens in five years if the PFAS on this turf is identified as a Prop 65 issue? Then what are you going to do? You know, a natural grass field can be plowed under. You're stuck with the artificial turf for 20, 20 years on that field, before you can do anything. And, you know, when plastic heats, you've all had water in a water bottle. You left it on your dashboard, and it heats up in the sun. And then you taste that water, and you're tasting the plastics in that water. We all have experienced that. Those fields heat up to 150, 160, 170 degrees. That gas is going to come off. It's a toxic gas. You do not need to use polluting fertilizer and pesticides. There are organic fertilizers that can be used that are non-toxic. We're doing a composting system. That composting, you can use worm castings. You can use the fluid that comes off the compost that would be safe to use. And the same, the report talked about stormwater, and that there's mitigation that could be done if you're stormwater. They talked, the end of the life in the report, the report assumes that the natural grass is going to a landfill. I don't understand that, why you, if you're renovating the field, it's an organic material and soil. You can compost it. You can plow it under and then reach out on top of it. There are alternatives that could be done. And so the landfill is inconceivable. And I'm not going to talk about the EIR, because that was discussed already. There are specific mitigation projects, such as planting trees around the field. I do not see in Fremont Park trees around the field. I don't see it on the Sports Complex. I don't see it on the maps for Wilson. There's no plans for those trees. So if you're going to consider that, that should be done. So these are heat island effect images. These are not a point-by-point temperature. These are average temperatures over the field, as determined by satellites, as they come over, you know, and this, and I sent you the link for this map in the packet of materials. And you can see where there's artificial turf on the Sports Complex, it's hotter. If you look at the pavement, we think of pavement as hot. We've been, council's been talking about hot pavement. Pavement's cool compared to the fields. You look at Edison, where there's an artificial turf field, and, I mean, specific, and there's artificial turf, and there's natural grass. And natural grass is cool. It's ambient temperature, but the artificial turf is higher. And just to summarize, there are real grass alternatives. There's such a thing as a turf manager who could manage, you know, what blend of the materials, the grass. They could manage the scheduling. And I want to thank you for your consideration. On the last page of the report, I have a link. This is, and I've sent you the document that has all of the links, all the research that's been done since 2005, that talks about artificial turf and what the issues are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Timed it perfectly. Now, let's go to the balance of the speakers. You'll have two minutes each. Please remain within those two minutes. Additional time will not be allotted. First speaker is Ralph Tapia.
Ralph and running. Good evening. I've been a Glendale resident since September of 1963. In my previous work life, I spent 40 years working for the postal service. The last 25 years, I was the manager of finance of the Sierra Coastal District. We cover 30,000 square miles in the state of California, which includes the city of Glendale, by the way. And I managed a budget of $850 million, which is about 87% of the Glendale City budget now. And managed 244 post offices, 10,000 employees. And I also wore the hat of facility manager over 277 facilities. My hobbies were Glendale Bay Ruth, Glendale County Mac, and now I am also the state Southern California Bay Ruth Commissioner. And these hobbies are now my full-time job, because I've been retired for five years. You cannot live in the state of California and not have water a consideration for every decision you make. Why? It's a limited resource. And I was trying to avoid the use of mega drought, but I couldn't find another word that quite conveys how significant the drought is in the state of California. 10% of the water used in the state of California is urban areas, people. 40% is agriculture. 50% is environmental, basically river water. We have had historic level of dryness for the last three years. We're at minus 38% snowfall in the last three years, and the state is hoping that we can mitigate that with a 35% reduction in water use. Very ambitious, by the way. In 2022, we had the driest January, February, and March over 100 years. Is that two minutes already?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm in favor of the artificial turf, because?
Thank you.
Water.
Thank you. Victor Roman.
Hello, I'm Victor Roman. I'm a coach at GSC Football Club. I am in favor for turf fields. Mostly, I listened to all the presentations today, and I have to say that for the kids, consistent training is very important. Something called Wolf's Law, where when a kid, when the kid's growing, you know, whatever, they're constantly, like, for example, if you're a swimmer, if you're always swimming, your bones actually model to that. And we just had a kid, Christian Julian, from Glendale High School, you guys mentioned today. I signed with his dad, so I know how much they train. I know how much swimming requires to become that level. But it's the consistent training that allowed him to get there. And for the kids to have off days because of lack of fields, you know, dirt fields, unsafe fields, I think, you know, pulls away from kids' dreams, you know? Even now, I have six-year-olds that talk to me, that have, they have these idols they want to be, and it's hard to do that when they don't have places to train consistently, to be able to reach, you know, those levels of their dreams. That's all. So I'm for turf fields. Thank you so much.
Next is David Segarian.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I am a Glendale resident for 40 years. My name is David Segarian. I'm also a proud father of a soccer fanatic, and also the treasurer of the AYSO Region 88. Region 88 is one of the largest regions in the United States and the world. You've heard of 3,500 players, but we could easily go up to 4,000, 4,500 if we had more playing fields. One of your consultants discussed about number of hours of playing field per time on a specific playing field, that can only be accommodated if the playing field is reliable and playable. And grass is a natural organism that matches to its own tune and doesn't necessarily respond quickly enough for allowing the play to be performed. I remember coaching my son in the years before 2005, when there was, playing fields were made of grass, and there was always dirt clouds around them, because most of the field would always be dirt instead of being grass. I remember many times I took players to the emergency because of scarred knees or elbows, because they fell on dirt. I'm all for environmental. I believe Glendale is one of the greenest cities in the world, but it needs to be allowing specific fields for specific playing areas for the goals that they are performing. And we need more fields, not less fields. Grass fields will not allow us to have enough time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Andrew Schaefer.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed council members, my name is Andrew Schaefer, and I have been playing on Glendale fields for, since I was four years old. And on behalf of me and my fellow athletes, I'm here to talk to you about the condition of the fields in Glendale. Artificial turf allows us to play in rain and other inclement weather, as well as the risk of injury is far less when playing on turf. For example, when there is baseball practice on Glendale Sports Complex, field number three, athletes get injured sliding and diving due to the field condition. As for soccer, turf always allows for more consistent play at a higher level. In closing, turf would really help athletes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andrew. How old are you, Andrew?
I'm 13 years old.
All right. Well, thank you for coming up. I'm assuming this is your first council meeting. We're glad to have you. Next is Leonard Menuchin.
Honorable mayor, members of city council, my name is Leonard Menuchin. I'm a member of AYSO's Board of Directors and a Glendale resident. One thing that I want to point out, as you saw, the fields that we're talking about are not the large, full-sized fields that we're talking about in places like GSC. So they are relatively small, because they are geared towards our younger players. In every one of the fields that you saw, there is additional acreage, let's call it, that can be used to mitigate any bad effects, or so-called bad effects, that these fields have by our staff planting grass, trees, and the like. So the property becomes truly multipurpose. Nobody has mentioned it yet, but they will eventually, they always do, is the safety of turf. Everybody will say that turf is not a safe field for our kids to play on, and what they will rely on are studies done on professional football. I submit to you that comparing professional football injuries to recreational youth soccer is not at all analytically useful. Ultimately, the proposal before you is the only way that we can address a myriad of concerns before us. While we will address the need for our young people to be outdoors, play games, be part of teams, and have the physical and emotional and psychological development that they need, we will simultaneously minimize the ill effects on the environment by reducing as much as possible water usage, water that we don't have, while saving money for the city and its resources. Thank you very much for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you very much. And by the way, for anyone who's in the audience who doesn't know how to, I know we haven't done this in a while, right? So if you do wish to address the council, there are cards in the back of the room at the table. You fill one out, and you submit it to the city clerk, and then we go from there. Next is Alexander Ayropetian. How are you?
Good evening, city council, city council members. My name is Alexander Ayropetian. I play with my soccer team, Far West United, at the Glendale City Sports Complex. I would ask you, please, to give us artificial turf. And the reasons, the reasons are, it's, we don't need to water them, and that is good for the environment, since it saves more water. It doesn't get as hot, and also, we don't have as, we don't have as many injuries. Also, gophers sometimes make holes inside of our, inside of our natural grass fields, and we trip on them while playing soccer. Thank you, city council members.
All right. Thank you. And Alexander? Good job. Alexander? Alexander, can you come back? So you've played on both grass fields and artificial turf fields?
Yes.
And have you fallen down on both fields while playing soccer?
Only the natural, natural grass fields.
Oh, you've never fallen down on any artificial turf fields?
No, not as much.
Okay, well, not as much. When you have fallen on both, which one hurts more?
Which one hurts more is definitely the grass fields, because it's a lot harder.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Even withstood the questioning. Thank you very much. Good job. Study hard in school. All right. Next is Monica Campagna. Monica, where are you?
It's nice to be back here. Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Thank you for having us back in the chambers.
Thank you.
I'll just speak off the cuff, because I'll never read this in time. I want to first just say reclaimed water, I just, I know we've said it before, but just to reiterate to everyone here, all of these fields can use reclaimed water, and it's good to replenish the groundwater with it. And I think it's the highest use of the reclaimed water. And at Fremont, when we And at Fremont, when we do this wonderful new field and it's grass, you can take the moment to install the reclaimed water there too, and water the whole park, and then hopefully the whole park will be in healthier shape there as well. So reclaimed water, we can use it everywhere. It's already hooked up, and it's good to use to replenish our groundwater with it. I'm here, I take care of a campus, Franklin Elementary. We took out 45,000 square feet of asphalt for that project, and I take care of the grass, of the, 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 the natural plants areas there. And I can't tell you how hot it still gets around the asphalt. This artificial turf, I'm here mostly because I'm so concerned about the school sites and the sites around the schools and the sites in South Glendale, that are so much hotter already. And I know that this, this type of plastic grass, it heats like 55 degrees hotter, it can raise the temperatures around the field that affect the kids and the staff by like seven degrees. And everything we need to be doing now is about cooling, and this is just not doing that. I totally understand what these guys are saying, and I think any support we can give staff to better maintain our grass fields, to give the, to, to open more fields up so that there can be less use on each one. I'm all for that, having bioswells to keep the fertilizers in. To, to apply for Measure W Stormwater funding for one or two of these projects would be amazing. It's about capturing water, and you could invest that in one of these hydroponic-style systems that supports really healthy grass. There's lots of ways to mitigate. Please, please think about the surrounding communities and the, and the homeowners and the people that use the parks and the kids, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mark Garcia.
Thank you, council members, for having me here today. I've lived in Glendale since 1990. I've worked in Glendale ever since then also. I've retired recently also the past couple of years. My two daughters were very active in AYSO. They played from ages five to 18, and that, they finished that up about 10 years ago. I've continued on with the program. It's a wonderful program. I volunteer mentoring, refereeing, coaching, all that sort of thing. The best thing the council did for soccer in Glendale was when they changed the sports complex to artificial turf. We were able to use that field, and we use that field a lot. Another good thing that happened up there, St. Francis also recognized the benefits of artificial turf, and they put a field in there. It's a beautiful field. I think even people, environmentalists, would say it's a beautiful field when you go up there and when you look at the view. When we have tournaments, people all over the county come, it's just a beautiful place to come up to. So that's first. The second point I want to make is we have, my understanding of what we have today is we're looking at recreation and the possibility of five new fields here in Glendale. We need them desperately, one way or the other. We really need to get these five fields into play. If it's grass field, if it's artificial turf, there shouldn't be any reason for us to reject any one of those five. We need all five of them. My personal preference is artificial turf, just because of all the reasons given here already. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is Yessenia Martinez.
Good evening, Councilmen. My name's Yessenia Martinez, and I am here to urge you to vote for turf fields. I know we would love to have grass fields, but it's just not sustainable. We have a shortage of water. We always have, want to save water regardless of where the water's coming from. We want to save as much water as possible. Second point is that we have to close down a lot of the grass fields in order for us to grow the grass. And that takes time, which means that kids are not playing. We need these fields to be playing. We need these kids to be doing something for the, playing. So honestly, everyone has said everything that I could say, but I'm just here to just urge you guys to please vote for artificial field and give these kids what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Yessenia.
Good evening. My name is Jose Serrano. I've been coaching AYSO Region 88 and Glendale FC for the last 11 years. Throughout these 11 years, I had many games that were canceled, many practices having canceled because of, you know, rain the previous day. And I had many kids, you know, coming to me and coach, why did we cancel the practice? Why are we canceling the game today? And, you know, it's hard to say, hard to tell them like, sorry, you know, you guys can't play because we had a little bit of rain last night. You guys can get on the field today. You guys got to wait, you know, a couple more weeks so you guys could play. So, you know, with that being said, you know, I urge you guys to, you know, vote for artificial turf. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll turn to the phones. And Mr. Clerk, I'll turn over the reading of the callers to you since you have that and I don't.
Thank you. Diane Wolke, you have two minutes, Diane.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Diane Wolke. I'm a retired advanced practice and public health nurse, with my advanced degrees being from USC School of Nursing and my certification specialty from USC School of Medicine. As far as the, it was interesting to see your report on the wildfire zone because frankly, the sports complex and Wilson Middle School falls are within that zone, Wilson being just a few blocks away. We all know living in Southern California, that wildfires do not respect boundaries. DTSC is currently studying PFAS and chemicals of concern in synthetic turf. They will open for public comment probably sometime this fall. They were, just recently became aware and were very interested to hear that, in fact, now, they know that PFAS is in these fields, anywhere from four to nine different chemicals are added to every single field for extrusion of the yarn. And, but they were also very interested to hear that, in fact, they have flame retardants added. A lot of these chemicals are on the Prop 65 list. I just sent you the other day extensive information about PFAS in these fields, another, an organization that I, on the Board of Directors' force, they call the playing field, presented this, an extensive paper as well as book at the US EPA regarding this. And much to our surprise, one of the commissioners on one of these committees actually brought up this very topic before we even presented on it. These are chemicals that are going to be highly regulated by the US EPA. National standards are expected for two of these chemicals by the end of this year. Final determinations have been, already been made on four, on two additional chemicals that have, all of these have been found in synthetic turf. The state of California is moving toward, toward banning PFAS or regulating PFAS as a class of chemicals. US EPA states that there are over 12,039 of these chemicals now.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you. Thank you. Joanne Pringle? You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, yes, I want kids to play soccer, but I'd love plastic, and I'd love plastic grass fields, if they were only as wonderful as promised. But they'll only cause more off days because it'll be too hot, hot to play. We're in a mega drought, and things are only going to get hotter. This is caused by us humans who have made this, who have been addicted to petroleum, which is what plastic grass is made of. And it's not true that plastic grass doesn't have to be watered. Shawgrass is only maintenance manual, so the plastic grass needs to be watered daily, just potable water. Whereas the natural grass would be able to use gray water, and as we've heard, it's possible at all the fields. So please, don't make this mistake. The other thing is, if we put in plastic grass, it kills the organisms underneath, and the dirt is absolutely unusable if we decide to go back to grass. So it becomes prohibitive and expensive to do that. And then there's the issue of, you know, what happens when this grass needs to be replaced, plastic grass? It'll just spill at landfill. And I hope that anyone who wants plastic grass will at least do a stint of cleaning up the LA River, as I did this past weekend, which is nothing but choked with plastic. And that will help you realize how much damage we're doing for the future of children. Thank you.
Jack Walworth, you have two minutes. Jack, go ahead. Mr. Walworth? Elise Calfayan, you have two minutes. Ms. Calfayan? Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Kostakian and council members. Glendale is going to plant trees throughout South Glendale to provide shade and cooling and quality of life. And one of the reasons is to mitigate the urban heat island effect. And meanwhile, the proposal before you would install acres of artificial turf. Artificial turf is detrimental to biodiversity and raises temperatures. Natural grass will complement the trees Glendale's planting and increase Glendale's actual green space. And grass can be watered with recycled water. It will mitigate the heat island effect. We have to move away from fossil fuel products, and we have to figure out how to operate without these harmful products. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Duval, you have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Kostakian and council members. I've been a Glendale resident for 10 years. I'm a GUSC parent. I have two kids who love soccer. They've been playing for AYSO for several years, and while they want to play soccer as much as they can, and I want that for them, for me, the environmental concerns, that way their recreational soccer needs, our games with the artificial turf baseball field at Glendale Sports Complex last year were miserably hot and unpleasant. And the Wilson Fields get very, very hot, even with the grass. The kids that play there are pretty young, there is no shade. So I would urge the City Council members to vote no on artificial turf, and thank you for your time.
Violet Saker. Violet, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, council members, appreciate you taking my call. I'm here to ask for the opposition of artificial turf. I am a mom of a child that loves to play soccer, and he's a GUSC student. And this past few weeks, he's actually been doing soccer camp in Glendale, and I was surprised at how intensely hot it was. His normal soccer class weekly is in North Hollywood in a natural grass field, and it's always been so much cooler, and they practice rain or shine. It's just a different mindset. It's more of a British mindset or European mindset where they just, you know, accept the variation of terrain. I feel like when I saw him perform on these really hot surfaces, he came home really bloodshot-eyed, and I was really concerned. It's actually made me not want to sign him up for any more soccer camps in Glendale in the summer anymore. And that's concerning because there's so many great programs here, besides from the fact that it's really terrible for the environment when it breaks down, creates microplastics in the environment. Again, there's so many ways to handle this, but as a resident of Glendale, my son is not going to be playing soccer in Glendale. All of the fields are going to be plastic. So thank you for taking my call, and thanks for rejecting the artificial turf.
Elizabeth Vitanzo, you have two minutes. Elizabeth, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Vitanzo, and I'm a Glendale parent and Glendale resident. I would just like to point out that the LCA did not factor into their charts the access to reclaimed water that four of the five sites have immediate access to. The fifth location, Fremont Park, has access to reclaimed water in a half-mile vicinity. Reclaimed water does not cost the city, whereas the artificial turf requires portable, potable water that is watered down to water it. I taught at Marlboro School, which is an elite private school in Los Angeles. They installed a state-of-the-art artificial turf field about 10 years ago, and it was on a timed sprinkler system using potable water because it got so hot that we had to water it daily when students were using this field to play soccer and field hockey. So this idea that it's somehow going to save water is ludicrous, and in fact, you have to use potable water on it. The LCA also says the warranty for artificial turf doesn't require watering. However, the Shawgrass Manufacturers Manual says artificial field should be watered every day to keep its playability in good condition. It's a strongman argument to claim that because Glendale's grass fields are in poor condition that a natural grass soccer field can't be sustainable when Glendale isn't using here the reclaimed water each of these sites has access to. Hire a turf manager who will know what kind of grass seed works best for our climate and how best to care for it, which would be far cheaper than 500K for each artificial installation. I live near Verdugo Park and Gloriata Park, and somehow those baseball fields managed to be in pristine green conditions all year long. So it is possible. Finally, if we actually measure the field temperatures and we shut down play over 120 degrees, we would see many more days canceled if you choose artificial turf. The climate is warming with more days over 90 degrees projected, and the heat island effect of these artificial turf fields raises temperatures around the field approximately seven degrees for everyone, students, staff, parkgoers, pets, et cetera. So I urge you to have a long-term focus and not be swayed by the greenwashing that the artificial turf providers are trying to do. Thank you.
Jackie Echo, you have two minutes. Jackie, go ahead.
Hi. Runoff from artificial turf contains pollutants that can run off during rains, and they contain heavy metals and chemicals which contaminate surface and groundwater sources. They often contain other toxic materials such as benzene, lead, mercury, arsenic, and other carcinogenic compounds. It does not support a healthy soil, which is important in filtering pollutants, increasing water quality and moisture-holding ability, and supporting healthy microbes and insects. Artificial turf kills all living organisms in the soil. Therefore, without natural plants and grasses, we won't be, sorry, therefore, natural plants and grasses won't be able to survive in that area again without extensive remediation. Finally, it is expensive to dispose of artificial turf at landfills. Please use reclaimed water and natural grass. Reclaimed water is highly treated wastewater, which is often used as replacement for potable water for irrigation and industrial needs. It is clear odorless and sometimes can be made cleaner than natural well water, which is, you know, for drinking water. Thank you.
Erin Forten, you have two minutes. Erin, go ahead.
Hello, I'm the mother of two small kids who play soccer here in Glendale, one of whom plays AYSO and one of whom will as soon as he's old enough. So I do not think it's accurate to say that the representatives from the league speak for 3,500 players and their parents in support of artificial turf. I know for myself and many others who have called and who I've spoken to, we're very against using artificial turf for our soccer players. There's an increased risk for greater injury when they fall and get scraped on the artificial turf. There's the off-gassing of a host of chemicals, including lead, PFAS, which are forever chemicals. Once they are in an environment, they will never go away. They are there forever. There is a possible link being investigated between childhood cancer cases and athletes who play on artificial turf, particularly goalies. A host of environmental concerns, increased heat, where the pet waste on this artificial turf is going to drain to is another big concern. The list goes on of environmental concerns that other people have already covered. So I'll just say thank you for your time and ask you to please vote against artificial turf and for more athletic fields and open space with the use of nearby reclaimed water. Thank you.
Amy Noel, you have two minutes. Amy, go ahead. Yes. Amy, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members, for taking my call. I'm a mother, and I have resided here in Glendale since 2005. I'm calling to express my support for natural grass and more, natural public spaces in our beautiful city. I wanted to point out that I acknowledge both natural grass and artificial turf will require proper maintenance, including water. But I wanted to point out that FIFA and other global soccer organizations use natural grass for their events, I believe, because it's been shown athletes sustain more injuries on artificial turf, and it does get much hotter. Artificial turf has no climate benefit, it's expensive to install it, it needs to be replaced, and when it does, it goes to a landfill. We already have equipment to maintain natural grass, and I think it is the best option. Thank you.
Nat Yontz, you have two minutes. Nat, go ahead.
Hi there. Thanks for taking my call. I'm an engineer here in Glendale, and I want to open, there's sort of a rye joke going around right now. You know, this is the coldest summer of the rest of our lives. And you know, a warming planet wastes more water than reclaimed water on sports fields. And artificial turf, both in its production and its application, contributes far more to that warming than natural grass does. It's, it's basic math. And I hope that all the parents that are out there arguing for their children's regular practice schedules are prepared to accept the consequences that cancerous chemicals can practice schedules are prepared to accept the consequences that cancerous chemicals will have on their children's eventual performance. So please, you know, for all our sakes, please vote no on artificial turf. Thank you.
Courtney Smith, you have two minutes. Courtney, go ahead.
Hi, I'm a Glendale resident. I'm calling in to oppose the city's plan to install artificial turf on five sports fields. There are many reasons to oppose this plan, but I want to focus on two issues. My first issue is the harm done to the environment and our communities due to microplastic shedding. Artificial turf will shed microplastic fragments that will wash into storm drains or soil, affecting our water and our food. In a day and age where plastic pollutants infect a large majority of the globe, we must avoid purchasing any products that harm our environment and in turn harm our community's food and water. My second issue is one that many Glendale residents know viscerally, the heat. The turf increases the urban heat island effect, meaning artificial turf creates its own heat island effect, which can become extremely hot and watering only cools it off for a few minutes. Unlike turf, grass and other plants like trees benefit the environment by reducing the urban heat island effect, filtering rainwater and pollution, and providing habitats for birds and insects. Natural grass reduces temperatures even on hot days. So with global temperatures exponentially growing, we can't afford to intentionally and irresponsibly decrease the quality of our resources and increase the temperature of our own city. In addition, the idea that artificial turf does not require water is misguided. Artificial turf does require watering so that the turf, even during drought periods, doesn't lose density, color, wilt, and become thin. To add to that, the increased heat on the soccer field and the toxins emitted from this material will affect the kids or adults playing soccer or other activities on a turf field. So I urge each of you to do the right thing and say no to artificial turf for the sake of our environment and every Glendale citizen. Thank you for your time.
Paul Verlheimer, Paul, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Eric Kusakian and council members. I'm Paul Verlheimer. I'm a 35-year resident of Glendale and a 27-year parent. And I would just like you to, I would just like to ask you to vote for natural grass and not for the artificial turf. One aspect of the PFAS chemicals that hasn't really been brought up is that we know that the regulation of toxic chemicals is decades behind where it should be. That so many thousands of chemicals are introduced to the world all the time that the regulators do not able to keep up. And how terrible would it be to discover five or 10 years from now that some of these PFAS chemicals in the artificial turf are carcinogenic or mutagenic or cause endocrine disease? And not only do we have to rip them out, but for the last five or 10 years that we've been exposing our kids to those things. So it's an area where I think caution is the way to go. And we know that natural grass is safe and we've been playing on it for centuries and there are lots of benefits to it, as you've been hearing from a lot of the other callers. So I'll just send it at that. Please vote for natural grass and not for the artificial turf. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me take a moment to pause here. We had 12 callers when we started oral communicate or the public comment on this. And after having heard from about 12 of them, we have another
Nine more.
Nine more who've called in. So at this point, I believe it's only fair to cut off. We won't take any additional callers or cards being submitted from the public who are here. We've allocated more than adequate time for the public comment portion for this. So we'll listen to the balance of the callers. And then after that, the council will have its discussion. Thank you.
Kate Unger, you have two minutes. Go ahead, Kate.
Hi, thank you all very much, Glendale City Council, city staff and residents. Pleasure to talk to you. I am a resident of Telencone and I use Fremont Park, a neighborhood park close to me. It's generally really nice to visit because it's shady, so it feels cool, relatively speaking these days, of course. And one concern I have with adding an artificial turf field park there is that it could make the park hotter and generally less pleasant for use as open park space for the neighborhood. I'm also thinking about our children. Children who grow up in urban and suburban communities don't have nearly enough contact with nature, especially in the southern part of Glendale. There's a lot of dense housing with little open space. And Fremont Park and other urban parks offer rare opportunities to have contact with natural environments and green space. When it's that rare, we need to preserve our green space for nature, for all of us and especially for our kids. And as you all know, I always view decisions like this through the lens of the climate crisis and environmental impact. And replacing grass with synthetic and fossil fuel based materials isn't consistent with good environmental stewardship. We need to plan and make decisions not based on just current day needs, but for the seventh generation. We want the seventh generation to have a good, green earth to sustain them. Please don't add artificial turf. Natural turf is better for our community today and better for our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Walworth, Jack, you have two minutes. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Walworth? Jack? Ann Deenan, you have two minutes. Ann, go ahead.
Hi.
Ann, go ahead. You have two minutes.
I think it's Erin Diamond. Do you have me? Because you said a different name. I wanted to make sure.
I have Ann as your first name?
Erin Diamond, yes.
Okay.
Erin, thank you.
Sorry, Erin.
Okay, this is okay. Can we start the time now?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for your time on this important topic. My name is Erin Diamond. I'm a homeowner in the Adams Hill neighborhood and a mother of two children who attend John Muir. And they play Glendale Community Youth Sport. I urge you to vote no on these five plastic fields in our community in the interest of the great youth athletes playing on these fields, all of our community members and our planet. We owe these athletes real grass to play on. I've heard multiple soccer representatives acknowledge that real grass is superior. I hear them wanting better fields, but saying that artificial turf is the only other option to barren fields is a false dichotomy. Give the children something better, something natural. Plastic fields are not the answer. They waste our limited fossil fuels, heat of our planet, and pose serious health risks. Please move to electric maintenance equipment, use reclaimed water, and add maintenance staff and funding if necessary to explore all natural alternatives being posed. Make natural grass safe for our kids to play. We are in a climate crisis and I would like to see Glendale lead us forward to careful, innovative solutions. Thank you for your time.
Matthew Bizanet. Matthew?
Yep, hello.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thanks very much. Good evening, mayor and council members and everybody else. I'll just quickly give my two cents. My son plays baseball up at the sports complex. The kid's biggest complaint is the heat. Anything that makes it hotter, I think obviously is not a great idea. And then anything that makes it hotter and toxic, I think is a terrible idea. They also play all over the city. They play on grass diamonds everywhere in neighborhoods with way less resources. I'm sure we can figure out how to get good grass going. And you know, it's the best. And with all due respect, I also, I played soccer for 40 years, played all around the world. No one wants to play on turf. Everyone wants to play on grass. And I think we just, you know, owe it to our kids to give them the best. And that's, that's everything. So thanks very much. And I hope you all vote no on turf. Thanks, bye.
David Venick, you have two minutes. David, go ahead. Mr. Venick? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you for taking my call. Actually, my wife actually called in earlier. We both have the same complaint. Both our children play AYSO soccer and both on grass and artificial fields. And last year, we actually played on the same practice field. And this was the fall, actually, but on some of the hottest days. And as a spectator, it was absolutely miserable. And I actually felt really bad for our children. We had to take additional water breaks because it was so hot on the field. And the second thing I would like to remind the city council is to look at the women's national team. They actually launched a lawsuit against the governing body to play on grass fields. They actually won that lawsuit. And if the women's national team demands that they work, that they play on grass fields, I as a parent, I'm doing the same. Thank you very much.
Regina Alkvar? Regina?
Hi, good evening.
Ah, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Regina Alkvar. I'm a mother, longtime resident of South Glendale, urban planner and data analyst. I also sit on the Parks Commission. Thank you for looking into some of the concerns we brought up in our joint mission, commission meeting earlier this month. I voted against all geofill plastic turf for a number of reasons. Bring up the entire study is based on a scoring criteria, right? To get a final score that is in favor of geofill plastic turf. And one of my biggest concerns that I brought up in the meeting is that the methodology lacks parity as reported. And again, if the consultant's recommendation is based on this calculation for a score of 3.2 for natural grass turf versus the winning score of 3.5 for the geofill plastic turf, I hope you agree that this is a pretty slim margin to not understand the complete methodology for how these scores were calculated. I think the weighting structure is implied in Appendix A, but the, for example, what multiplier is used for the variable specifically for field data views, I'm unsure. It is also unclear how you reclassify the quantitative scores into a 1 through 5. For example, did you use standard deviations or equal intervals to reclassify 0.52 net gallons per square foot per hour into a score of 1 for natural turf? I was hoping that the report for today's council would provide some clarification, but I didn't see that addressed today. I think it's unfair to the general public and to us as a commission and for councils to make a decision and vote based on incomplete information on how these scores are derived, especially since it's again a slim margin of a 0.3 in the final score difference. In addition, I want to bring up that this is an environmental and racial justice issue considering four of these sites are located near our lower income households, many of whom are non-white, who will be primary users of these spaces. The plastic turf would significantly increase temperatures in the areas and unfortunately there is insufficient research to understand the long-term quality control and health impact of the artificial turf, which we would expose our families to.
Thank you. Thank you, Regina.
Thank you.
Sir Rajini Lal?
Hi.
You have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sirajini Lal. I've lived in Glendale for over 20 years. It is certainly true that we are in a mega drought, as one of your other speakers mentioned, but that doesn't mean that we should be polluting our air and our water with acres of plastic. I am the parent of two children who have both participated in AYSO for over 10 years and I strongly oppose artificial turf. First, in my family, I'm the parent who does most of the laundry. And I can tell you that plastic fields degrade and they stick to the players and to the family's clothing. I have cleaned small, tiny pieces of non-biodegradable plastic out of my children's clothes and their socks. I've picked it off of their equipment and their bags and I've had to pick it out of my own clothing and shoes. These plastic particles are ending up in Glendale's wastewater. They're ending up stuck to the sides of my washing machine. And ultimately, these particles are going out and polluting the larger world. Also, artificial turf is very, very hot. It is much hotter than grass. I can tell you this as a person who has watched their kids play on it. I vividly remember a game where my child came off of the pitch crying because her cleats had become so hot, they were burning her feet. So we are risking heat injuries to our children on these fields. Finally, I serve as a GWP commissioner and I'm fully aware of the availability of recycled water in our city. And this is absolutely what recycled water should be used for. It should be used on natural grass fields. So please let's invest in the health of our children, in the health of our city and our larger environment. Let's install natural grass and care for it. And let's not be picking plastic out of our homes, our clothing, and you know, out of the larger environment where it is a massive, massive pollutant. Thank you very much for considering and please oppose this proposal.
Leah Caprara? Leah, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Hi. Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and all the participants. And I am Brazilian, so my country has a huge soccer fan team. And also, I am biologist, specialized in pollution. And I can tell you by my experience, by what I've heard, that artificial turf is not the answer for soccer field. We need to go more natural. We need to go back to the original because of the pollution that everybody talks about very well, I don't need to go on that, and mainly because of the water. In the natural grass, besides it will be much more healthy for everybody and for the soccer players, it will be used recycled water to maintain. And this is very easy to do. And so I really oppose this proposal and I count on you for that. So thank you very much for your attention. Good evening, bye-bye.
And our final caller, Edwin. You have two minutes. Edwin, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, council members. Good evening, Mr. Councilman, Mayor Kusakian. I am strongly opposed to having artificial turf installed in the grass. Consider the fact that when it's 100 degrees, you can, you can already tell that there's harmful gases being released into the air. And it's a big, big health and environmental hazard to the public. Now, my biggest concern is that, is that there's a high risk of cancer. And we do not want to see children who are playing soccer, baseball in the field being diagnosed with cancer. Now, if you are going to approve installing artificial turf, then you need to disclose to the public of a Prop 65 warning by installing Prop 65 warning signs to let the public know that this is artificial turf grass and there is a risk of cancer involved in it. Now, here's what I would do. I would look into, in a logic standpoint, I would look into finding out which park is the most frequently used so we can increase water there. And, and the less frequently, less frequently used parks to cut down on water. That's what I would do. I would cut down on water, parks where it's frequently less used than other parks and increase the water in parks that are most frequently used. That's my idea. And pretty much, that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it?
Mayor, that is it.
All right. So that was well over an hour of public comment. I hope our residents and members who called in are satisfied with that opportunity to weigh in on this very important discussion. I'll turn to my colleagues to see what questions they have or comments they'd like to make. Who would wish to go first?
Just my, just my questions. First to the representative from Shaw or LAC. Do you have flame retardant in, is there flame retardant in the Shaw turf?
Not that we understand. I'm not a, just to clarify, I'm not a representative.
Do we have a representative from there or?
Mayor Kusakian, Councilmember Devine, we do not have a representative from Shaw turf. Mr. Ravi Bijaj is the consultant from Citadel who conducted the study and working closely with individuals from Shaw turf with the information that he used to do the analysis.
Okay. Do you, I noticed that you made a note when they mentioned runoff chemicals after the rain. Can you comment on that?
There will invariably be water pollution associated with artificial turf. That is one of the things that was scored within our study.
Okay.
And that is of concern for sure.
Okay. And you mentioned that part of the artificial turf is recyclable.
Correct. The artificial turf fibers and the substructure are all recyclable. The infill is likely not recyclable, so that would need to be removed for the recycling process.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. Then let's see. For Coco, I guess, thank you very much. Thank you. At Edison, where do the students play? Do they play on the grass sock, the turf soccer field or do they play on the concrete behind the school? This is a Pacific community park.
Yes, Mayor Kusakian, Councilmember Devine, the students do use the artificial field during their physical activities and as well as the generally the play, open play area, but they do use the artificial turf field heavily. Couple of times a year, they work with us in permitting the natural grass for certain activities and they do come on to our side, obviously with, with the proper observation of teachers and personnel to use our facilities. But generally speaking, their physical activities are conducted on the artificial turf soccer field that is within the boundary of the school site.
Okay, okay. And there are two field Um, and there are two field possibilities, one at Mayor's Park and uh the other one, of course, at the sports complex. Where, where is?
Yeah, Councilmember Devine, I believe the speaker was referring to what we generally in terms of over the years have referred to Site A, which is an open, uh, open space area adjacent to the sports complex. If you're familiar with the entrance to the sports complex, to the left, there's a gated area that's not open to the public. Uh, uh, we do have some flat land that we have looked at. We've looked at some concepts in the past 15 years that I've been here. Um, there are some feasibility issues, there is access issues, uh, but that is a site that can be potentially considered. The other site, which is south of the sports complex, uh, just north of Mayor's, is Site C. Uh, so the four sites that were part of the development of the freeway, freeway two along the area, they were landfills, sports complex and Mayor's were developed as parks and the two other open areas right now are just open space.
Okay, but we're not talking about actual Mayor's Park because I know that that was suggested about four years ago.
Correct, we are not talking about Mayor's Park. Uh, at the end of Mayor's Park, Councilmember Devine, there is yet another gate that leads to open space and that is the open space that has been suggested uh to be considered for future soccer fields.
Okay, okay. Uh, on, about Fremont Park, are there trees planned? I thought I saw in uh one of the drawings that there were trees surrounding, not maybe surrounding the um playing field, but uh in, I mean, because there's going to be grass in Frem, there's going to be real grass in Fremont Park except for that soccer field if we decide on the turf, correct? And there are trees and a water feature and?
Correct. Councilmember Devine, I've asked City Clerk to actually pull the presentation back up and I believe it is slide number five. That is the master plan for Fremont Park. Thank you.
Right.
So as you know from this master plan that is on the screen, currently the site has eight tennis courts. It will maintain eight tennis courts. Four of them will be shifted to allow for, it's hard to point here, that roadway of Han Avenue to literally go through the park now and connect the entire parking, allowing for additional 35 parking spaces. In the master plan, the community requested that we consider additional parking. This design by shifting the tennis courts over opens up a roadway, creates more parking. As you know, also the playground that is, used to be currently is, I should say, kind of closer to Patterson, has been shifted closer to the center of the park. That is for the safety of the children, we want them away from streets and adjacent to it is going to be a water play feature that given the current guidelines by the county is going to be recycling, treating the water and reusing it as well. Uh, other than that, we are, you know, enhancing the picnic tables and the uh, uh, ability for people to use shade to conduct their picnics. There will be plenty of turf left at this park because the only area that is using the artificial turf is approximately 23,000 to 24,000 square feet of the uh open turf which is in the southeast corner of the park.
Okay, and it is, this, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Panosian, do you know the number of trees, new trees that will plant as part of the project approximately?
Uh, City Manager Golanyan, I do not have the actual number. I can tell you that there will be a number of trees such as the palm trees as part of this process that will be removed and there will be new trees that are planted. Uh, the count itself has looked at protecting the indigenous trees for sure and focusing on certain trees that are in decline to be considered for removal, but new trees will be planted. The design itself shows as you saw around the perimeter of the tennis courts, those are all likely going to be new trees planted for the consistency and the look and as part of the design that we have developed. So there will be trees, uh, I apologize for interrupting, there will be trees that are removed. Some of the palm trees that have created some hazard issues because they're the fan palms, they're quite high and they do drop their fronds and the fronds dropping have kind of created times, risk for maybe uh individuals getting injured, for electric lines, so it will reduce the number of those tall palm trees, yet there will be additional trees that are planted within the park.
And, and they're not actually shade trees anyway, so that's all for the better. But the, um, are the, those trees all around the, if you can bring up that slide again, uh, palm trees, I'm not palm trees, but trees around the tennis courts that, is that what those pink circles are?
Yes, the uh, the, the view, if we can get it back up, the, the pink rounded uh, uh items that are around the perimeter of the tennis courts, those are, correct, those are all trees.
Okay. And the reclaimed water that they're talking about for Fremont is 700 feet away, so we'd have to build the infrastructure to get it there? Is that correct?
That is correct. Councilmember Devine, we have communicated with our friends at the Water and Power. The access to the reclaimed water is at Glen Oaks Boulevard, which is 700, let's say 1,000 feet away. It's not that far off, within a quarter mile radius, there is access. So yes, if the council directs uh to have reclaimed water to the park, regardless of whether we go with artificial turf or not, there will be plenty of park to water, uh that is a probability and right now we have estimates of approximately in the range of $600,000 to get reclaimed water to Fremont Park from Glen Oaks to be able to use it.
And it cannot be used on the turf, right?
Uh, that is also correct, Councilmember Devine. For the artificial turf, the recommendations when we're doing the treatment, if somebody has a cut or there's a spill of any sort, to use potable water to be able to wash that off, not reclaimed water. That is a correct statement made by all the callers as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to call Mr. Garcia for a second, if I may. Uh, I was looking for, I was waiting for someone to come up and say they were a referee. Because I, this weekend, I talked to some soccer players and uh, and some, the fathers who were referees. When you referee on artificial turf, do you do that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do your feet burn or your shoes burning when you finish the game? Because that's what the fathers were telling me, that we're referees.
On a hot day, your, your feet are hotter than they, than they would be on, and I'm going to put it this way, they'd be hotter than they would be on dirt because we, we don't have grass, obviously, in a lot of places. So the turf is hotter on your feet, but there's also a policy in effect that we don't play if it gets too hot. We have a temperature maximum that we don't play.
Uh, temperature, air temperature or turf temperature?
Field, yeah, field temp. Well, I'm not sure we stick a thermometer in the grass, but you know, people have their phones that they carry with them and, and thermometers they'll carry with them. I don't think they're sticking it in the turf to measure it that way.
I know people have done that.
Yeah. I don't think it's 70 degrees, quite frankly. I mean, I'm hearing this, I don't think it's 50 degrees. I, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it's 10, 10 to 15 degrees hotter.
Okay, well, and, and the other thing is I, I have, um, in my past life, I call it, I was a, a coach and a athletic director, et cetera. And, and I know that on very hot days, nobody's playing.
That's correct.
You're not playing on grass and you're not playing on turf. You're, you're not playing at all because it's, because of heat exhaustion and all the other implications.
There's more severe issues than hot feet when it's a hot day. We don't play in July or August, we start up in September. That's when our games start up is September. So we avoid the hottest, at least our organization avoids the hottest months.
And you mostly play like early or in the morning and then in the late afternoon?
We go all day, so there's going to be an occasion. There's going to be an occasion in September at 2 o'clock in the afternoon where we have to cut the game short or, or cancel the game.
Okay, I appreciate your honesty.
No problem, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Wilson, Coco, this one comes back to you. At Wilson and Cerritos, these green spaces that we're talking about for the soccer fields, is that the only green space on those two campuses that, for the kids to play?
Councilmember uh Devine, as far as the, the layout of the facilities, I do not have the aerial to be able to show that, but the, at Wilson, I believe the turf areas that are being used currently for soccer and athletic fields, that will be more or less the significant turf area within that park, uh, within the, uh, within the school. And similar with Cerritos, the area that we have turf that the kids currently play is what we're going to be using. So there may be some um turf around the perimeter of the, of both of the schools, but as far as a large area of turf, those will be the two large areas within the school.
Yeah, because of, well, you have, you showed the two pictures.
Correct.
And it looked like most of the, uh, the green space was going to become turf, if that's how we, so there would be no, there would be no um natural grass on these two sites for the kids to play.
Uh, Councilmember Devine, that would be correct. In the areas where the playing fields are, where the activities are taking place, the available turf, natural grass would be converted to uh artificial turf if the direction is from council. And one distinction, if I may, I know callers and individuals who are speaking about the heat of the playability. Having coached, refereed and played on, on both natural and artificial turf, there's no doubt in anybody's mind that a well-kept natural grass is an ideal one. However, we cannot compare ourselves with FIFA fields or professional fields, we are a municipality. Those fields get utilized probably once a week for a game, maybe every other week because they travel. Even if they use it a couple of times a week for games, it's limited. Professionals play uh on those fields, yet they practice in alternate fields. Compare that to one of our facilities. Sports complex is open 7 to 10, Saturday, Sunday, and I guarantee you, any hour you go at the sports complex, those fields are booked. So you're looking at 30 hours on weekends and every day from 2 to 3 o'clock, teams start coming in all the way up to 10, those fields are booked. I would like to ask my AYSO representatives how many teams they have actually practicing on a given field. It's not one team. When there's practice, I used to practice, like I used to coach 15 years ago, there could be four to eight teams practicing on one field. So it is maximizing the use because demand is heavily there.
Yeah, and the, and I, that leads me to the other point that I, I've been thinking about is the fact that with so many bookings on these soccer fields, the kids are actually playing maybe an hour and a half and then they're gone, they're out, correct? In other words, they don't, the same kids aren't on there all day, they're just on there for the duration of their game or their practice and then they're out.
Councilmember Devine, that is correct. Depending on the number of teams that are assigned, most practices, from my perspective, have been within an hour and a half and then before those teams are off the field, the other teams are running onto the field.
Right, yeah, it's, there's a constant turn, turnover so that they're not, they're not on the field for like all the, the whole day or for four hours or five hours and, and um, what about, um, if I can ask, all the kids left, the players left, because I wanted to ask them too about the heat effect, so I can't, and I can't do that. And the shredding as well, because I, I talked to the, the soccer players this weekend and the girls, they were girls, female soccer players from the local schools and they were telling me that their clothes were covered with the shredding and, and all of that as well, so um, I'll just have to take that into consideration. I think that's, that, those are the only questions I think I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who would like to go next? Just a question. All right, Councilmember Najarian.
I just have a question. Coco and um, Mr. Bajaj, so the city has hired you to do a report for us and you haven't really told us anything about your qualifications, your experience, your education, like who are you? Here you are and, and so much is being argued about your findings and your opinions and your scoring and your weighting. Who are you? And I mean, qualify yourself, if you would, please, for what you've been telling us.
Of course. Uh, let me clarify from a personal standpoint first. I'm a parent of two girls, five and seven. I do live in San Diego, so not in the city of Glendale. I am an earth science major from UCSD. I teach a class in introduction to green buildings there. I started my career as a sustainability consultant. I worked for a nonprofit called the San Diego Green Building Council, an advocacy and uh workforce development program in San Diego. I've worked as a private sustainability consultant for the past seven years after leaving from the nonprofit organization and I particularly work on ESG, environmental social governance consulting and sustainability consulting for the built environment. That incorporates things like life cycle analyses, carbon analyses, as well as some of the human health concerns. I'm a certified or licensed BRM assessor, which is a sustainability standard, and I perform indoor air quality and indoor environmental quality tests for the well building standard and similar standards. I'm not the only expert that worked on this as well. Paula and Francis, who may still be on the WebEx, have countless hours of experience doing carbon analyses and material health analyses as well.
You consider yourself to be independent and unbiased in this, when you were given this task?
100%. I actually, from a personal standpoint, have gone through a process of looking at artificial turf for my own home. Uh, it's not something that I wanted to do in the initial standpoint. I was very curious to see what the findings of our study was, where it's going to be. Um, we do have a small plot of artificial turf for a particular function at our house and everything else is natural turf um at our home. That doesn't get 2,900 hours of use and we do have pets that we have to consider from a natural turf standpoint. I'll just want to add one more thing because I miffed my response earlier about water pollution. You know, I'm, I live in a household where I, we don't purchase polyester products for clothing unless they have a function, waterproofing, moisture wicking or dress clothes, because every time you wash your clothes, there are microplastics that are shedding from them. So I'm very intentional about the water pollution issue. It's not something I meant to respond to lightly. It is, however, one of the multiple criteria that are included in this study and in this particular context, we did specifically look at the three athletic parks that are used solely for that function and that's uh part of the reason why I think we are independent in this study.
One last smaller question. Um, you said you had a uh, a, a group that you, uh, an outreach group, if you will. You had six members of the Glendale Environmental Coalition, you had five members of the sporting organizations. Are those the individuals who placed the priorities on each one of those factors that, that you scored here?
That's correct.
So did you weight them equally? Because there's six for the environmental groups and five for the sporting groups. Did, was there some sort of equalization?
There was not. The, the weighting we did was to use the 11 folks that were there.
Okay, so there's inherently a little bit of disparity there because you've got more people on the environmental side.
That's correct.
You've got less on the sporting side.
That's correct.
Because we're talking about close numbers here, but in actuality, if there's any error or, or bias, it's towards the environmental side.
That's correct.
Thank, I have another question.
Council? Council, Councilmember, Councilmember Brown.
I'll go with my comments. And first of all, I want to, I want to thank, um, well, everybody who's come to speak and express their passion around this issue and um, you know, for all of staff's hard work, I know that's been going on for a long time and um, for Mr. Bajaj, is that it? Yeah, Mr. Bajaj. And I, I, I think, I was a little skeptical about doing this analysis, um, but um, I think, I think there's a lot of value. I think the value is less in kind of a final score because, you know, we could go through and um, make different judgment calls. I think even some of the things that we call quantitative have some room for judgment. So we could go and, and, you know, another person could come and find something slightly different. Certainly with the, the part that's more value based, which is, you know, how you weigh environment, how you weigh, you know, public health, how you weigh community, we could all come down in different places on that. So we could come out with different numbers. I think any of us could, but I think the, the process that we've gone through, kind of ferreting out a lot of this information, discussing it, um, at the commission meeting, I thought that was an excellent discussion. Uh, I learned a lot from that. So I, I, I want to start off saying that, um, although I don't think the, the particular number that we come out with, that single number is really the, um, the answer. I think the process is really helpful. Um, I, as you might guess, would be placing a higher value on environmental and public health attributes than I would on, on recreation. That's just who I am, so um, you can, you know, you can guess that um, I would um generally come out skeptical of artificial turf and I, and I am. Um, I, I wouldn't put it in my own home. Um, so just, you know, that shouldn't surprise anybody, that's where I come from. Um, let me, I, I'll, I'll kind of get to my end, end result, but, but I just want to kind of go through a few of the, of the elements where I know there was a lot of debate um at the commission meeting and you addressed some of them today. So on this hours of play issue, because one of the big things that's coming up is we want fields that are available. We want to be predictable and all that and, and we want, and, and your whole methodology bait was based on all of these attributes, I think you normalized by reference to the number of hours of play, right? So that's an important number. And, and I know that um, at the commission meeting, it was mentioned that um, the LCA is assuming for artificial turf, it's going to be 2,900 hours a year, which one of the commissioners said that's eight hours per day, 365 days a year. I know staff said, yeah, it's not exactly like that, it's 13 hours on the weekends and it's, but anyway, basically there, there, there seems to be an assumption that we're going to be able to play on this pretty much all the time. But then we're talking about this heat issue and, and I, and I know that there was, um, I mean, we've been hearing how much hotter it gets. Um, I, I see a number that's getting kicked around of 40 to 7 degrees, 70 degrees hotter than ambient air temperatures. Um, I don't know if that's your number, is that your number or where? I don't know if that's your number, is that your number, or where does that number come from?
That's based on the number of different third-party studies at the particular times of day. That's specifically surface temperature based on the heat absorbed from sunlight.
Okay, and is that, so that would be fairly accurate range?
I, I would give it a slightly different range with the GeoFill product than with the Chrome Rubber. I'd have to reference the study for that, but on there, on days where it's 80 degrees, you can measure up to 120 degrees. It could be a 40-degree differential, but on days where it's maybe 90 degrees with direct sunlight, you might also see 120, 20 degrees. So I would have to look into that one a little bit further for a more accurate wide range.
Okay, okay. But that, that is something that I'm, I'm wondering about, because if we're saying, and I, the other thing I heard is, you know, there's, there's a recommendation, we don't play on these fields when the field temperature exceeds 120 degrees, right? And that, it sounds like that, that hap, that occurs when you get to temperatures in the high 80s and maybe 90s, right? And I saw somewhere, somebody provided this number in, in 2020, we had 77 days over 90 degrees here. And we know we're going to have, you know, every year it seems to be more and more and more and more. So how is it that we can come to that 2,900 hours a year, given all these other things that we're talking about here, about how hot it's going to get? We're going to, we're going to have to cancel play, et cetera, et cetera. How, could you, could you try to help me understand that a little better?
And I will do that qualitatively, because we did not complete an analysis of future climate scenarios. I think there's two points that I would pick out of this particular study that we've referenced. The one of them is the study that looks at surface temperature over a three-day course after watering for GeoFill versus Chrome Rubber. And there, on the third day, you can see a temperature of about 120 degrees for the GeoFill as an infill product, whereas the Chrome Rubber is showing upwards of 140 degrees. The main point with respect to that.
Chrome Rubber, we're not, we're not looking at Chrome Rubber.
Right. And so I just, that's why I wanted to, to bring that point up, is just to clarify the temperature differential is consistently referencing a majority swing towards the Chrome Rubber, because that's the product that is typically available. The important distinction about that is a second quote that was called out during the commission meeting, and something that I went back and thought about quite a bit after that meeting, which is a quote that specifically says that the temperature drops as soon as a cloud goes over the surface. And with the GeoFill product, as well as the artificial turf in general, you're going to see a pretty quick dissipation of that heat. And so while we're talking about 2,900 hours, and particular points of the day with direct sunlight where temperature does increase, I would say that there's probably going to be a shift in certain times where you've got overhead direct sunlight. That's where you have your most direct heat gain. Your opportunities are going to be when you've got the sun angle coming in at a different angle during the morning times or in the afternoons, we can extend play around there. But this all has to do with the management of surface temperature. And surface temperature measurements, I think, have not been completed, you know, in order to, to model this out for future climate scenarios.
Okay. So I, that is something that I think, I, I'm not so sure that these fields are going to provide everything that, these artificial turf fields are going to provide everything that people want because of this, this heat effect.
Can I reiterate, though, that the 2,900 hours were played hours, not just reserved hours? Those were played hours at Sports Complex, Field One, in 2021. And again, that's something that we went back to the drawing board, so to speak, and confirmed with staff, that those were the played hours and not just reserved hours.
Okay. And then I know there's the water use issue. We've heard that back and forth. So just to confirm again, all of the fields except Fremont that we're talking about, all currently have access to recycled water, is that right?
Yes, Councilman Brodmann, that is correct. The two park facilities, I can for sure say, Sports Complex and Pacific Park, they both have reclaimed water. That's what we use to currently water the landscape at both of those parks. Fremont is currently potable, and while I'm not 100% certain for the two GUSD sites, given the proximity of reclaimed water, highly possible both Wilson and Cerritos. Cerritos Park itself is reclaimed water. Accessibility to reclaimed water at both those school sites is a high probability.
Okay. And I know we have Michael DeGhetto back there, who I see. That's Michael, right? Yeah, that's Michael. We, so, yeah, my understanding is that we, other than Fremont, and we are talking about getting recycled water to Fremont in any case, that's something that we would be irrigating, we could be irrigating all of these fields with recycled water. Isn't that right?
Mayor Kasakian, Councilmember Brodmann, we currently don't have a plan. As Coco mentioned, when I initially did the estimate, it was about 300,000, but our estimate now is around 600. So it would take us coming to council and getting an appropriation to spend $600,000 of our funds that we would spend on replacing a water main or doing some other work in order to run recycled water to that park, to Fremont.
Just to Fremont, but the others all have it?
I looked, I think three of them do and one of them doesn't.
I thought all, I thought four of them do and only Fremont doesn't. That's what I keep hearing in various things, but.
So Councilman Brodmann, the only sites that I can't confirm would be the school district sites, that whether they do have it or not. The proximity to Cerritos Park and Cerritos Elementary, we share a, basically a border of both facilities. The fact that we have irrigation reclaimed at Cerritos, we can presume that Cerritos Elementary School has it in sight, but Wilson, I can't say for sure it is not one of our sites, whether it has it or not.
I think Wilson does, but I thought Pacific didn't. But does, do you know for sure Pacific does?
Pacific is reclaimed water. We use reclaimed water.
Okay. So then it's just Fremont.
And the other thing, because a lot of people bring up the fact that, you know, it's, we're in a mega drought, and we, and this, and, you know, artificial turf is going to save water, but I don't, our recycled water, I think you've told me this before, basically something, is it 70% of it we end up kind of throwing away because we don't have any way to use it? Is that the number that we dump in the LA River?
Mayor Kasakian, Councilmember Brodmann, yeah, right now it's about 70% goes down the river. I, I think we can use more recycled water, if that's what you're.
Yeah, okay. No, it's just the point, the point, I wanted to be clear that, you know, we do have an abundance of recycled water that we are putting into the LA River, because we don't really have the, the ability to deliver it where it's needed, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
So this is, so watering natural grass fields is not, it, it doesn't create a problem because of the drought we're in. In fact, it's a good use of our recycled water, which we have.
It is a good use, I, you know, I, looking at the, at the carbon, I think there was a graph that the consultant had about the carbon impact. It, it's important to consider, though, that using less water overall on a field does use less carbon related to the energy of pumping that water, whether or not it's recycled or potable.
Right. And that would be even more at, like, the Sports Complex, it would be, take a lot of energy to pump the water up to the Sports Complex.
That's right.
Less so, less so in South Glendale.
Yeah, that's correct, except that there is carbon used to treat the wastewater and make it recycled water. And, and the lag warp treatment plant is at the lowest elevation, because it's near the river. So it does, it does involve some pumping and energy use.
Right, okay. And then I guess we talked about, you know, urban heat island. I know that there's like a specific definition of urban heat island involved, and this is not you anymore, Michael. Urban heat island is like, you know, where, where the heat comes in, it's, it kind of radiates out over a longer period of time. That's how you're defining. I understand that, but, you know, more of a layman's concept of urban heat island, it's, it's also just during the day, just during the day affecting the very immediate vicinity, the schools, the kids at the schools, the other park users, and maybe residents that are right adjacent to the park could be impacted by this heating. So I think that got a little bit lost. I just wanted to mention that. And one of the, there's a study referenced, I think, by the LCA, which somebody met, brought to my attention, Journal of Applied Meteorology and Climatology, which says replacing ground cover with artificial turf could result in urban air temperature increases of up to 4% centigrade, 7% Fahrenheit. Is that, are you aware of that?
I'm not aware of that exact study, but I could.
Okay, I think it was referenced, and somebody gave me a link to it. So that is a concern I have, is, is the heating just in the immediate area, even though we're not defining that as urban heat island effect? Okay, greenhouse gases, I think there was, we, we covered this, this fact that we're using, you know, we're moving to electric on all of our gas, I mean, all of our landscaping. Yes, the sit-down mowers will take a little longer, but I think, I, I don't think there's any doubt that this council wants to move there, and we will move there quickly. The landfilling of sod, I don't think we're going to be landfilling sod, I don't think we're allowed to landfill sod now under SB 1383, so.
Correct. Councilmember Brodmann, that is correct. We're working with Integrated Waste and Sustainability Officer to determine how best to take the, the grass that we removed for renovations, to work with our haulers to get them to, not necessarily a landfill, but have it figure out a way to get into the composting system in the process. Yet, you know, at the end of the day, the, the removal and the delivery, the carbon emissions for involving with that is still a concern. Similarly, I know a question had come up earlier, the, both in the study, we've identified both artificial and natural grass to be landfilled, whereas the product that's sitting in front of you, the actual shock pad, you'll notice grass clippings in there, and you'll notice like the black and the green. That is the recycled turf, the, the artificial turf recycled into that pad. So the concept of recyclability is there, and the ability of it to be recycled is there. However, to play very conservative, the consultant itself had looked at both options and said, at this time, we will identify the scoring for both as being landfilled.
Right, I understand. Although this stuff, it's not really recyclable, it's downcycled, it's, it's reused once.
As a shock pad.
Yeah, that's not really, yeah, it, it's not like a circular economy type of thing, whereas the grass is not, and the grass was kind of dinged, you know, so to speak, from, from that GHD score because of an assumption that it's going to be landfill, but it's not going to be landfill. We're not allowed to landfill organic materials anymore. We don't landfill, or, yeah. So I think there's a little bit, there's, you know, a little bit, and that gets back to the point where I think we could tweak these and come out with a different number, but anyway, I'm going to, one other thing, water pollution. So there was, there was a point about kind of grass being, being, you know, kind of getting scored down a little bit because of the use of pesticides and herbicides. Do we use harmful pesticides and herbicides in our parks?
Councilman Brodmann, currently our IPM, Integrated Pest Management Program allows us to use caution label, which is the least toxic of all chemicals and fertilizers that we apply within our facilities.
Okay. I mean, I hope we're not. I hope we're not using things that are going to be harmful for kids in any case. But anyway, I'm going to jump over a bunch of stuff, because I know I don't want to go on forever, but yeah, that, blah, 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 let's see. I think, you know, people talked about PFAS, I'm going to, you know. Oh, one question about that. Does the manufacturer give us a detailed list? Do we know all the, all the compounds that are in the product?
We do. The MSDS is listed in the appendix, so anything that's hazardous material is listed in there.
But every, every, do we know precisely what all the materials are that are used in these products?
We don't. Shaw has not completed something called a health product declaration. That's kind of a newer manufacturing topic, where you're going down to 1,000 parts per billion of all the materials used, so that it does not exist.
So there may be other hazardous materials that haven't shown up yet on the Prop 65 list, but that are actually in there?
Correct.
Okay.
But that has been confirmed from a PFAS standpoint. The, the direct quote from Shaw is that there is no PFAS added to or known or measured within the GeoFill.
Yeah, but they're, they're the manufacturer, I'm sure they're going to say things like that. Anyway, so I, I, you know, all this is, is, these are nits and nats, but I think the bottom line is, I mean, I'm not a fan of artificial turf. However, I think, given the situation we're on, given the demand for youth sports, I can support artificial turf up at the, at the Sports Complex. And I've, I sat down with AYSO folks like a year ago or something, and I think I said this to you there. I would, I would support artificial turf up at the Sports Complex, because, you know, we're not at a school, we're not really around a whole, you know, we don't have residents right there. I think it would, it makes some sense to do it there. I would also support, and I think maybe Councilmember Devine was kind of leading in this direction, I would support developing additional fields in those two areas you talked about, because I think one of the issues here is we just need more fields, and if we had more capacity, that we could actually probably let some of the fields rest more between plays, and we could maintain nice grass fields. So for me, if we could do artificial turf up at the Sports Complex, if we could have additional fields, which could potentially be artificial turf up there, that I think would allow us to do natural grass at Fremont and all of our South Glendale sites, including the two schools. That would be a proposal that I could get behind and I'd be comfortable with.
Mayor Kasakian, if I may, Member City Council, Councilmember Brodmann, like Mr. Panosian mentioned, developing areas A and C, we have talked about, we've had conversation about it for a number of years. It's going to take an extraordinary amount of grading. It's not very, a simple development of fields that could happen easily or anytime soon. Mr. Panosian also mentioned issues with accessibility, and so it's challenging. Not saying that it can't be done, but it's going to take a lot of effort and a lot of money to, to be able to develop those sites, but it's a potential.
That would be my, that would be my preference, is do it right, do it healthy, do it for the environment, balance some of these different, these different considerations, but, you know, provide the sports facilities that we need for our kids. We want them playing. I'm all for that, but do it, you know, without sacrificing some of these other things that, to me, and I think to most of us, are very important, like public health.
I just wanted to mention that it's, it's not a near-term project that can be done in the next few years, so it's very complicated, but it can be done.
You want to go next? Yeah. Councilmember Brodmann?
I'm done.
Is that the conclusion? Yes, Councilmember Devine, please.
Thank you. Well, I want to start out by, by thanking all the people that wrote emails, called in, showed up, met with me. I did watch that six-hour meeting, so I thank the Sustainability Commission, the Parks Commission for their thoughts, their debate. And, you know, we have to consider, you know, there are definitely both sides to this issue. The, the report, you know, when I carried it in, they all said, oh my God, you carried that. And it, it was an extensive report, it was, and I went through it, you can see, I have my tabs on there. So I, I tried to prepare myself and to learn as much about this as, same as Dr. Jones over there, I know more about turf and grass than I ever thought I would, I would need to know. But mine, my decision comes down, I think, to a more philosophical decision. I, I think that the job of government, our job, is to improve the lives of people. And then, of course, you have the other flip side, where you can't please all the people all the time. And so therefore, I'm kind of looking at both sides, and I've, I've come to the conclusion that grass is great in probably all locations, but turf may work in others or in some. So to me, this is a compromise situation. We want to continue our environmental goals, but we also want to enable our kids and our families to enjoy our outdoor spaces as much as we can. So I'm going to do what I call split the baby. So I'm, I'm going to go along with the Sustainability Commission. I'm not going to go into all the minutia of the, the environment and the, you know, the water and the, we've been through that time, you know, over and over and over again. But I'm going to go along with the Sustainability Commission and suggest that we use approved turf at the Sports Complex. It's away from home, usage is tremendous, it would save on our maintenance, a lot of the kids seem to want it, the coaches seem to want it. But I want to extend that to Fremont Park as well, because as I questioned about the trees, there are going to be trees. This is a smaller field, you know, and I think probably because it's a smaller field, it's going to be used by younger players. And I think it's the older players that really, really ruin the field. So I don't think this would be a terribly bad place to put the turf. And there are going to be grassy areas in that park for kids to play and for families to have picnics, et cetera. And, you know, as long as we have the mitigation and, and the, the trees. I don't approve of turf at Pacific Park, because, or the two elementary schools that we've been talking about, Wilson and Cerritos. Baseball fields, they don't get as torn up as soccer fields, and there's recyclable water available there. And plus, as we learned, sometimes the elementary school kids go over to that park or the field and play, and, and I, I just really. and play, and I just really feel that they, they need to experience the grass and, and to get to play on, on the grass surface. And our elementary school children deserve to, to do that. So I, and these, these schools that are, that we're looking at are close to residential areas, Cerritos, Wilson, Edison, so I feel that those should be natural grass. I just want to conclude by saying that it seems that no option is perfect. Nobody's going, all the people are not going to be happy with what we decide, but we can't sacrifice the good for the perfect. So let's offer our kids and families the opportunity to enjoy our parks and athletic, and their athletic passions. So I would be willing to approve three fields grass and two fields turf, and I think that's a fair compromise. Amen.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for everyone that came in and called in. And next time there's a power outage, that OMS system, I think, I think one of our advocacy groups could help out in getting the word out to the community.
There you go. I hope so, I hope so.
As, as we saw tonight. Well, listen, let me tell you, one of the, one of the first things I did as a council member in 2005 was to inaugurate the two turf, artificial turf fields at the sports complex. And before that, and we saw the pictures, we seemed to gloss over them, they were disgusting, they were embarrassing, they were unsafe, they were causing respiratory issues with the dust, there were rocks on the field, the fact, and it wasn't for lack of trying by our Parks Department to keep those fields maintained, it's just that in this city, with the limited number of fields and the large number of, most of the time it's our youth, there's absolutely no way to keep the grass on those fields, whether you use potable water, whether you use recycled water, it just is not possible. And I have a history, a little history with the AYSO organization, both of my children went through the program. I was an assistant coach, I was an assistant referee, they wouldn't let me in the middle, I just had to call out of bounds, that's as far as they did. So I was very familiar with the different surfaces that, that the kids played on. I was also familiar with where the kids practiced, and these kids at AYSO, the 3,500 of them, and the coaches, the poor coaches are tasked with finding, you know, a small patch of grass, whether it's Verdugo Park or up at Shaw Canyon, and that's where they would hold their practices. And at the beginning of the season, it would be great grass. After about a week or two weeks, the grass is gone, and these are little kids, these aren't big, you know, 200-pounders playing here, these are the little seven-year-old kids, you know, they miss the ball, they kick the grass, and there's a divot right there. After about two weeks, those fields, and let's not call them fields, those patches of grass were completely destroyed, and by the end of the season, they're playing in mud, and when it is watered, their cleats is the artificial turf. And I don't care what anybody says, we live in Glendale, California, we don't live in, you know, Crystal Springs, Iowa, where the population is 20,000 and they've got 50 acres of soccer fields where they can rotate around and say, this field is off this season, let it go fallow for one entire season, and regrow the grass and re-sod it. We just don't live in that sort of area. We asked for this LCA, I wasn't crazy about this LCA, I don't know who asked for it, it wasn't, it wasn't, didn't come from this council member, but everyone said, let's get the LCA, the life cycle analysis, the triple bottom line, whatever we called it. And low and behold, it's done, and the, the conclusion is that the best, not the perfect, but the best solution is, let's just quote it, so we all know, it is our finding, finding of experts in the field, by the way, not, not by soccer people, not by environmentalists, it is our finding that artificial turf with the geofill offers the highest potential to balance the diverse priorities of park users, public groups, and city operations. Now, the people that wanted this report are saying, no, they're poking holes in it, and especially at the commission level, not so much on council, we went easy, we went easy on you guys, but at the commission levels, boy, you guys were digging into every single line of that. So a strong influence on me is the report of our experts in the field who say that this geofill turf is the best, is the best item. The grass, even if we use, natural grass, even if we use recycled water, there are pesticides that need to be placed on it, maybe not so toxic pesticides, but still pesticides. There's fertilizer that needs to be put on it, organic fertilizer, but that, just because it's organic, doesn't mean that it's safe. One of our largest water quality issues that we have in the Foothill region are the nitrates in the water. Those nitrates are caused by organic material, the septic tanks that everyone in La Canada and La Crescenta used to have. So just because something is organic and it runs off, it doesn't mean that it's safe. Let's talk about the artificial turf. You can use it all season, you can use it when it rains, if it gets too hot, children shouldn't be out there, if it gets to be 90 degrees, kids shouldn't be out there playing anyway. Let's talk about who uses these fields, the AYSO. We shouldn't just call it a recreation, someone said, it's recreation. And I learned, the light bulb went on in one of my sessions, you know, these gentlemen here in the blue shirts, coaches and the administrators of AYSO, they're not here because they're soccer fans, they're here because they're dedicated to our children. AYSO is not a sports league, AYSO is a youth development organization. They're dedicated to our youth. Am I correct? You taught me that, I'm like, oh my God, I thought this was a soccer league. No, it's youth development. It teaches our youth to be better citizens, it helps with their obesity issues, it helps with their respiratory issues, developing their, their lungs, helps with leadership, it teaches them victory, and it teaches them defeat. And people say we have a climate crisis, yes, we do, but I would also say, we have a, a youth development crisis in our country, and we need more organizations like AYSO putting those kids on the fields. I mean, let's bring it back, we're talking about putting those kids on these fields where they can play 10 months out of the year, and they can learn from their mentors and their adults and their, and their, their colleagues and their teammates, how to be better people. That's really what it's, it's all about. So when I vote for artificial turf, I'm voting not for recreation, I'm voting for youth development. We all complain about our kids being stuck on video games and being stuck on their phones. With grass fields, they're going to get maybe two months of fun, of development, and after that, it's going to be hell. And unless you've been out there as a coach, as a parent, you don't know what those fields looked like, and the pictures don't do it justice. It's terrible, not to mention the gophers that, that dig up and create those, those difficulties. So I'm leaning towards the artificial turf. I'm willing to back away from my 100% support of it, I will put away the school district fields at Cerritos and Wilson at this moment. I think they, as a governmental organization, need to weigh in themselves on that. I don't want to impose our, our decision on them, but I'd like to see it at the sports complex at Fremont. So so far, I'm agreeing with, with Ms. Devine, but I would also like to see it at Pacific, even though it's a baseball field, those kids practice soccer on that field, look at the pictures, it's torn up. It's not just baseball they play there, it's the, the football club, it used to be the Estoyan Club, now it's the Glendale Football Club that plays there. So I would like to see it on all three. Schools, I'm willing to jettison at this point, but I think we owe it to our children, this is for the children. And anyone who says that we should not be worried about the future of our children is not worried about our community. And I'm worried about our kids, and I think that the activities that go on those fields with the artificial turf have a much greater impact on our kids than what the environmental impact, and there is an environmental impact, don't get me wrong, but when I weigh those two together, the children get my vote. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you to all my colleagues. Some very good, lively discussion. Thank you to everyone who's come out this evening, who's sat through this very lengthy but important discussion. I think that some excellent points have been made on both sides of people who support the artificial turf, people who support natural grass, I think that, yeah, some excellent points have been made, and as well as, you know, there's, there's definitely, we can, we can poke holes in everyone's arguments, absolutely, but this should not be one side versus the other, and we should not be speaking in absolutes if you're for this and you're absolutely against this, or if you're against that, you're for this, because we, we won't make any progress. Sorry, a little tired, nothing like sitting through a six-hour, almost six-hour meeting after you've been on a flight back for 13 hours the day before, but we'll, we'll get through this, and I'll try to make my points as quickly as possible. Question regarding the artificial turf getting recycled, Mr. Bajaj. So you said it gets recyc, what does it get recyc, what does it get recycled into? Because I had never heard that, I just assumed that it's toxic and useless.
The primary recyclability would be into the shock pad, so it would have a secondary life in the underlayment for product. That's claimed by Shaw to have over an 80% recycled content in it.
But then what happens to this afterwards?
That would be landfilled after the 20 years.
So let's just be clear on that.
And then some of it gets recycled into new turf fibers, and that has a 50% recyclability.
I, I get that. Thank you. How many soccer fields does the city of Burbank have, by the way, Mr. Bolognikin?
Zero.
I'm sorry, can you say that so everyone can hear that, all the way to Burbank?
Mayor Kusakian, members of the council, they have zero actual soccer fields.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. And does, when someone from outside of the city of Glendale wants to use one of our fields, do we charge them for the, more for that use of the field than if they were Glendale residents or a Glendale organization?
Yes, we charge them standard rate. The Parks Commission a couple of months ago adopted a new policy, rental policy, we have a number of different levels, approved youth group, non-profit rate, standard rate, and commercial rate, so our first priority goes to our approved youth groups, and our approved youth groups are, have a membership of over 85, 90% Glendale residents.
Thank you. I, I bring that up just because for anyone who's advocating for our youth and says that we are, you know, advocates for youth sports, or that, you know, we care about the environment, whatever else the case may be, if you have friends in Burbank in your little, you know, play date groups or whatever else it may be, tell them to call their council members and their staff in Burbank and tell them, you know, they want soccer fields and they want fields there as well. I think it's a little unfair that we carry the burden of a lot of the social programs, from affordable housing to everything else. I think it's important for our regional neighbors to, to do everything they can as well. And it was made the claim of, it's easy to bring in reclaimed water, but we got a price tag on that, it would be approximately $600,000 to bring it into Fremont Park. I would say this much, that I would be supportive of that expenditure, I think long-term, it is an important expense to bake into our budget. We may not be able to do it now, but regardless of what direction we go into in terms of the type of field that's there, we should use reclaimed water to the maximum possible use of it. So I would support that. So I know that there was some comments they made by Councilmember Bratman, my colleague, about supporting artificial turf up in the sports complex area. I would only say, and this goes in the vein of my saying we can poke holes in everyone's arguments, that there's a very precious and, a very precious ecosystem up there. For anyone who's ever been up to the sports complex, you have a lot of rabbits, a lot of rodents, a lot of coyotes, a lot of deer, they're there, if you're ever there playing, you see them come down to the field, right? Adding more plastic up there, I mean, these microplastics will get into the environment, they will get into the, the ecosystem through predators and the cycle that is up there, so, you know, that's not a perfect solution either, right? Yet, it is something that we have to do because the artificial fields there get a tremendous amount of use. So what we add, how we add, there's benefits and detriments to both. I know that one of our callers, Ms. Law, called and spoke very passionately about the removal of plastic materials from her children's clothing. Ms. Law works for a local state legislator, who I think would be, if this is something that they are very passionate about, and they think that this is a terrible scourge to have plastic materials in turf, which I personally don't like artificial turf, I think it's fancy plastic, harmful to the environment, both in use and in production, I think it's something that Sacramento should take up. If the legislators up in Sacramento feel that this is so harmful, they can pass a state law and ban it completely. You know, that would probably be a better use of their time and more appropriate than micromanaging local zoning and construction guidelines for local jurisdictions. On really hot days, no one should be playing on a field, whether it's grass or artificial turf, let's be clear about that, and I think that was made abundantly clear. In terms of, you know, there were a few parents who, God bless them, said that they are AYSO parents and they don't want their children playing on artificial turf. If you are an AYSO parent and your child plays on a field and is avid and goes to various tournaments, inevitably, your child is going to play on an artificial turf field. They may play on one grass field or two, but with all the fields that are out there, with all the games that are played, your child, and if they don't play on one at a Parks and Recreation facility, guess what, they're going to probably play on one at a public school facility. So the proliferation or the, the construction of these artificial fields is not the city's blame alone, right? The artificial fields already exist, your children are playing on them, and it's, it's probably going to be replaced with an artificial field after it has run its course. Again, not necessarily a good thing, but it's just a fact. And in terms of, I, I agree that it's a terrible, terrible thing to have these plastics and gases leach into the environment, but we just spent two years allowing children to run around wearing synthetic masks on their faces with breathing whatever is in a K94 or K95 mask, with no one raising an eyebrow about what, well, maybe few people did. Again, it was the right thing to do, we were facing a pandemic, but let's be realistic here, though. Childhood obesity, lack of access to fields, two years of children being limited in the amount of physical activity they can have and how that's affected their mental and physical health, I don't think that was necessarily spoken out enough about, but I will say that no solution is perfect here. When we're talking about Fremont Park, and I know that there are some folks who wish to have it be artificial turf, I would say this, when we convert any field to artificial turf, we limit the access to it versus if it is grass, if it is open, if it is not fenced in and the people being able to go and sit there and enjoy it when it's not being used for sports purposes. Quite honestly, I go to Fremont Park quite a lot. It is the largest park closest to our home, outside of probably Pellon Coney, but it's much larger than Pellon Coney. And if we were to take that portion of the park, which I know now is used by casual or pickup soccer matches, and convert it to a artificial turf, which needs to be maintained heavily, needs to be protected because of, you know, again, animals defecating on it and other issues that come up with trying to keep its longevity and utility for a long time, it's going to basically... time, it's going to basically eliminate access to a large portion of that park to the public. My preference would be if we had the resources and the funds to have recycled water taken to that location and have that field be grass and have it be as well-maintained. However, we also are in the middle of a drought and we have these difficult challenges that we're facing. Fremont Park, again, I would prefer for it to be grass and for us to be able to spend the money to do it right, but I may be able to, I may be swayed because it seems like there may be some consensus on what type of material to have there. Pacific Park, I would support for it to be the more friendly, less, I don't even want to say less toxic, both are plastic, but to have it be the recommended type of turf for Pacific Park for a couple of reasons. One is I've heard from a number of families, at least three families have called me and said that they are unhappy with the conditions of the field there. They feel that there's a social equity and issue with that park not being as well-maintained or having as nice facilities as some of our other parks, particularly only on the baseball field. Mr. Bolonekin, I may have forwarded that note to you. I don't know if you recall, but we were told that it was a particularly, it was a cultural bias towards individuals living in that portion of the town, that we were not maintaining that facility. And I can assure them that is not the case. We would love to have all our fields be maintained. Obviously, we're having this discussion now. So for the sake of that field and the amount of use that gets from one of the most densely populated parts of our city, surrounded by very dense apartment buildings filled with families, I would support for Pacific Park to be turf. Sports Complex, it's already there. I would maintain it. I would not expand on it, especially with the grading issues and the cost. So I would keep the turf as turf. Cerritos Elementary School, my preference would be for it to be grass. The young children should be playing on grass for all of the reasons that were mentioned by our friends from the Environmental Coalition, just, I think it's just much better for the children to have grass there. And Cerritos Elementary School's a fairly smaller footprint than most others. It just would work. And Wilson Middle School, I could truly go either way, but if it were turf, it would be fine just because of the frequency of the use and having run a very slow mile during physical education there many, many times on a very poorly maintained natural field, turf may be better. Certainly wouldn't have helped my mile time any more than it was, but I would be okay with that being either or leaning towards turf. And that would mean we would have a hybrid. I propose a hybrid or a compromise position of some grass, some turf. Hopefully things improve. Hopefully there's some progress where we can actually have all our fields be natural material versus fancy plastic, fancy toxic plastic, but we're not quite there yet and we have, as my colleagues have so well articulated, we're faced with difficult decisions, many responsibilities, and we have to make decisions that will not make anyone particularly happy. That's what being on this council is about. We'd love to please all the people all the time, but we're not going to be able to do that. I don't know if either party will live here completely satisfied with the outcome this evening, but I think it will be the best outcome we can come up with for our city. And like Ponscha's pilot, I'll wash my hands clean of the decision afterwards, except I can't because we have a water shortage and we should limit how much water we use. So those are my comments. Thank you for a very thorough presentation to all the boards and commission members who reviewed this issue. From, I noticed that we have the Chair of our Parks and Recreation Commission, Mr. Sardabegyan, who sat here throughout the duration of the meeting. I saw another one of the members here. Thank the consultants, staff, and again, all of, everyone who called in and made very good points on both sides, supporting and not supporting the recommendations of staff. So that's where I'm at and I will be happy to entertain motions for my colleagues.
I have a question, if I may. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
At Pacific Park, I think Councilmember Najarian said that is, baseball field is used for soccer as well?
Yes, Mayor Kasakian, Councilmember Devine, that is correct. It is used for soccer, baseball, as well as flag football at times. When we have our Wong Glendale tournaments, we use both facilities. So it is used for multiple sports. It is, in its original design, it is a baseball field. That is correct. Little League uses that, but we have taken opportunities when given the demand for soccer and when baseball may be out of season and/or the team, the Pacific staff are able to squeeze in the soccer, they actually put soccer out there as well as flag football. So it is used for multiple sports.
In the outfield? In the outfield?
In the outfield, correct. Most of the soccer within our baseball fields, if I can honestly say, most of our baseball fields do get utilized for soccer in their outfield. It's the outfield that is used for soccer.
Thank you.
All right.
I just feel like with Pacific Park, there is recyclable water there available. I think if we do turf in some of the other facilities, that perhaps that would let staff be able to maintain this park better and use more water. And I just really feel that since the elementary school is there, that, and they use that grass facility, that we should not put turf there. And I guess we're doing a poll.
Councilmember Najarian, I think is passing. By the way, I will, yeah, I think we'll have a, yeah, absolutely. I think Councilmember Najarian wanted to keep track of what I had said, which was Fremont Park grass, Pacific Park turf, Sports Complex leave as turf, Cerritos, and Wilson, I said grass for the elementary school, possibly turf or grass for the Wilson site, but I think that that would be more appropriate to have a consult with the school district regarding what their wishes would be as well. I mean, my preference would be for our schools to have grass, natural grass as much as possible, but I, again, I know how hard it is to maintain those fields. I've run or very slowly jogged on those fields. I know it's not easy for them to maintain it and I don't want to set our children up for other injuries. And again, there were a couple of things that were very interesting to me. One was this argument about injuries on artificial turf versus natural grass, and I think you get injured on either pretty bad depending on it. And I think that, and the last comment I'll make is every time I heard triple bottom line, it made me think of double secret probation for some reason from Animal House, but I'm probably the only person who still remembers that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I make a suggestion, it appears like we have consensus at least at one site for artificial turf.
Now, let me interrupt you.
So if I may, if I may, suggest that we take direction from council on individual sites and then we can take roll call. So I think that'll be simpler for all of us.
Or you can do a motion on each site. That's another option.
Mayor Kasakian?
If I could just, just for the record, the comment was made about keeping Sports Complex turf. That's a new field that would, that was, one of those fields would be converting to artificial turf.
Yes. And Mayor Kasakian, that was going to be my point of clarification, that the currently Field Three, which is what's at play for Sports Complex consideration, is currently natural grass.
Absolutely.
And the proposal is to convert to artificial turf. And to the point of utilizing, whether it's recycled water or potable water and natural grass, it's not that we're not watering it enough, it's that they don't have the downtime. So ultimately, if we want to keep natural grass at high quality, we have to shut it down at minimum three months out of the year so we can do the renovation, give it the rest, and also quarterly shut it down, do some aerating, fertilizing, which comes along with resource necessities for staff as well as, you know, funding. But ultimately, what we're doing is still not addressing the issue at hand. What we started this whole process because of the demand by keeping the natural grass, we're not truly addressing the main purpose while we started this 15 years ago. It's the only clarification I want to make because watering it more is not going to change the quality of the turf. It is the high demand, the high play, and not the rest time that we're not able to meet the demand.
I think most of us have an idea of where we're going on these issues. Let's go through each site, if you would like. Read off the site and do we want to remove the school sites completely and revisit that at a future time or would you, let's, we'll do that. If my council colleagues agree, we'll revisit the school site issue after we've consulted with the school administration. But let's address our city sites first and then we'll take it from there. So how would you like to do this?
Well, I'd just like to go with your compromise, Mayor, that is to put turf on Sports Complex Field Three, to put turf on Pacific Park, and to let Fremont Park remain as natural grass.
Oh, I'd vote for that.
I think that's a consensus that.
So artificial turf at Pacific and Sports Complex Number Three and...
Grass at Fremont as a compromise.
Can we get a motion?
Just the clarification that in order to move forward with natural grass at Fremont, we will have to revise our plans and specs because they initially were designed for artificial turf. So that's going to extend and add some cost to it. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it if that's council's direction, but it's going to take longer and it's going to cost more.
And that's kind of another one of the reasons, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is that I was suggesting turf at Fremont and not at Pacific.
But one of the issues, I totally understand that, but here's the issue. Pacific Park is actively used a lot. It gets a lot of use, whereas Fremont right now, it's, it gets used, but it's not a formalized programmatic use. It's an open, you know, it could be a few pickup soccer games here and then, you know, most of the rest of the time, it's just people sitting there either lounging or hanging out.
But can we ask the, some of the coaches about that? Is that the case or?
Mr. Panosian can respond.
Yes, please.
Mayor Kasakian members, Mayor Kasakian members of the council, we have a number of soccer groups waiting for Fremont to open. There's a waiting list now for Fremont to open as a soccer field. So if we were to go with our natural turf, as Mr. Gulanyan mentioned, it's going to take a few months to change the plans, come back to council and get those plans approved. The field will be down, you know, three to four months a year, similar to what we do at Pacific and Sports Complex, but there is a waiting list now to use Fremont, even though it's not even constructed.
I understand your point on Pacific with the equity issues for neighborhood equity, but...
But if we can get, if we can get some sort of a, I don't want to say a promise, but a, some sort of word from our Parks Department that they will kind of upgrade Pacific so that we don't get complaints that it's not...
If the artificial turf project is not approved for Pacific, we do have plans on renovating the entire field, so we will use some funds to renovate the field.
So the field should be, I'm sorry to cut you off, Mike, but the field should be renovated regardless, right? But here's the issue. We just put in a new small ball field at Brand Park, which was beautiful, by the way, the grass on that, unlike any you've ever seen. You could just sit on it all day, run, play. The grass is already feeling the effects of the drought, I can tell you, just from the recent slew of Little League games that I attended at that site. So the grass is going to suffer. My issue is, let's talk about Fremont Park for a second. You're seeing there, folks there who are waiting in line to use that field because they have an expectation that it's going to be a soccer field. Where are those groups playing now?
They're playing at Pacific. They're playing at John Ferraro Fields in LA. They're playing at the Witset Fields at North Hollywood. We have a number of Glendale teams that are playing outside of Glendale. And that's the issue that we've had for the last 10 years, that our Glendale groups, Glendale teams are either going to Pazina, Sun Valley, Tahunga, Burbank, and for our soccer fields, even down to Glossel Park in LA downtown area.
I mean, I don't know. I just feel like once we put a fence around that, it becomes artificial turf. You get a whole bunch of open space immediately taken off the books for folks in that area. Mr. Bolonekin and I had a discussion about this. He was assuring me that there will be open play time where neighbors can come in and have free access to that field, obviously monitored because we want to be careful. People don't want to take slurpees or, you know, sticky, throw candy, piece of candy on that. But again, still, my preference would be for that to be grass. But I'll be, for the sake of making compromise here, I will trade that turf for Pacific Park to be grass, if that's what will be accepted and...
And well, and well taken care of.
And well taken care of. Promise.
Mr. Mayor, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve artificial turf at Sports Complex Field Three. We approve artificial turf at Fremont Park and that Pacific Park remain natural grass with a special attention to maintenance and community needs and desires. And that the school district fields be put aside at the moment.
I'll second that.
With no decision.
I'll second that.
A motion. All right, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian, Brotman?
I'm struggling. Yeah, well, there's three of you anyway. I can't bring myself to vote for artificial turf outside of the sports complex. So I'll be no, but I think it's there anyway.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Kasakian?
No. Now we're tied. We can rehear it.
Okay. So what happens now?
We can kick it over to the next meeting or we can have a revote now and we can all march, march down the road together for the sake of progress. Councilmember Brotman, would you care to make that motion?
We don't know what's going to happen in two weeks.
Well, I mean, we have a new council in two weeks.
Listen, this is not something any of us like, but you were obviously an advocate and a leader on this issue.
Mr. Mayor, in the interest of collegiality, compromise, and getting the job done, I will, I will...
Let's have a motion to reconsider. Is that appropriate?
Uh, let's see, the motion, the motion tied, so yeah, we need a motion to reconsider.
A motion to consider the previous motion.
Is there a second?
Counselmember Brotman or the mayor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reconsider.
And then I have to pass the cabal to second that?
No, you don't. Anybody can.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian?
Is this to reconsider?
Reconsider.
That's what the procedure is, yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian? Yes.
I'll move the original motion.
Which was?
So the one that was...
Yeah, I'll second it.
Second. Let's have a roll call now.
Agajian? Brotman?
Reluctantly, yes.
Thank you.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. All my colleagues.
Mr. Mayor, we have an item eight, eight C2. This is just to revise the spec on Fremont Park specifically to allow for the spec to call out the use of the Shaw product in the spec. So if we can get a motion on that.
I'll move that item.
Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajian? Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes, thank you. What is next?
Oral communications, discussions limited to items. Not part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation report. Mayor, I don't have any calls.
No calls?
No calls.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
There's a second? All right, we stand adjourned. We stand adjourned, thank you very much.
Yep.
Sure.[1744.78]